Alrighty, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Eric Swan, 14 Old Farm Way, Chair of the Municipal Building Committee. Municipal Building Committee was formed a year and a half ago, March 2014. In a huge briefcase, I could go back through all the issues, so I tried to keep it on an envelope to be sort of like a condensed version. But over that time, over a year, we've had -- Municipal Building Committee has worked with several feasibility reports, some produced by the Capital Planning Committee back in 2012, some produced by an architect, Whitefield CSS Architects, that did assessment surveys of the town hall facility, of the police station, the basement below us, of the fire station. Before the Municipal Building Committee, there was a Site Selection Committee, a Public Safety Site Selection Committee, and that rolled into a Public Safety Complex Committee, which involved negotiations with the Protection Fire Company Number Two and the Town Hall in terms of merging a police station--
Can you hear Eric back there?
A police station and a fire station on the Protection Two slot. The negotiations at that time did not go forward, and so the Municipal Building Committee was formed and was charged with looking at still the facility issues of Town Hall and the police station. So with that, I have to say, I am disappointed in the outcome of the vote, but what I'm really disappointed in is that Municipal Building Committee held 20 meetings or more, I can document 20, held at least five joint meetings with the Board of Selectmen, in which the Capital Planning Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Planning Board were there. I went to each board at least once, if not twice separately, by myself as the Municipal Building Committee, to present the issues to those boards. And we held, in November of last year, we held on Saturday, just like this, a public workshop on all the work that was done on the different options that were out there and on the site selection. We had Tracy make the whoopee pies, which is why I asked her to make the whoopee pies today, because I thought it would be helpful to bring people out. We had two people, two residents from down the street locked down to hear that whole So I'm disappointed in the vote, but I really think it's like all the work that's been done is like a tree, you know, falling on old town hill, no one heard it. And I have heard that. I've heard limited sort of feedback, and that's really where I stand, and that's the reason why I would say that the Municipal Building Committee was charged with solving the most facility issues in town in the most economical way that will provide the most long-term value for the residents. And the thoughts behind that, as we went through projects, and we went through sites, and we went through program, is that those were our guiding principles. I know people think that the price tag of a total project cost of $11.6 million is expensive, and yes, it is expensive. But the value and the synergies you get for combining a facility and sharing spaces such as elevators, such as mechanical rooms, such as exits stairs, that's where you get the value. That's just value of building cost. Where the real value comes to the town is the synergies where the police department, fire departments, the Town Hall are all in close proximity. If you come into Town Hall now, we have such a setup that if somebody's not at the town clerk's window, but somebody's in the assessors office, you can still get help. Someone will speak up and say, hey, can I help you? If we have departments that are scattered all across town, we're all going to be driving across town in order to do business, and especially our public safety. I know it's a small town, I know that, you know, the police log and the report and the papers are all that exciting to read, we don't have that much going on, but there's still a lot going on behind the scenes, and the best -- and that's a, I guess, that's a tribute to the good service that we have for fire and for police. So disappointed with the vote, but the Municipal Building Committee still has its charge, still sees it as a positive, brought out all the people here today. We need to move forward. So what I'd like to say, and then I'd like to back it up a little bit, is that the Municipal Building Committee does not have a new recommendation. The Municipal Building Committee feels like they still made the best recommendation for solving the facility issues. A combined facility, and we went through seven sites in town, we went through five options. The five options, so we had a new Town Hall, and we had a police station somewhere else in town. We had a new police station right here, and a new Town Hall somewhere else in town. New police station here, and a Town Hall, which was either new or in an existing building in retrofit. We had a new police station, new Town Hall right here. We had a new police station, fire station, with renovations to Town Hall on the far lot of Protection Company Number Two. We have drawings and programs for an addition of a police station on the backside of Town Hall. We have drawings for an addition to Town Hall on the far side here that would take basically what is in the trailers for inspectional services for the Health Department and provide those offices alongside the building. All those options were then, and through that process, what we did is we tried to organize what the program needed to be, so that we were now dealing with apples to apples. The police station was this size, the Town Hall needed to be this size. And then we went around and we looked at the sites, and we said, okay, if you have the same Town Hall and you have the same police station square footage, what happens with the site? Can we get water and sewer there? Is there, you know, for some sites, we could see ledged and undeveloped, just undeveloped land, other sites, we could assess what it would take to do demolitions, the sites. Those options all had moving costs, they had temporary facilities in them, and that's -- and those options, as I had said, were presented to joint meetings by the Board of Selectmen with other boards and committees in attendance, and that's where the approval, and that's where the advancements, and that's where the weeding out of options came. So, you know, I've heard, I've seen it written in the paper, you know, respect the vote. I've had people tell me I need to respect the vote, but what does that mean?
Respect the vote.
Okay.
What's the better idea?
What do we do?
What else have we got?
Hold on, hold on. I'm not done yet.
Hold on for one second.
So--
And then we go on.
So we, the Municipal Building Committee did a lot of work to put these options, to put budgets, to put pricings, to put schedules in an organized way in which we could vet the different options together. What needs to come back from the people is not just a no vote. A no vote isn't going to make the issues go away. You can go downstairs right now, and the issues aren't going away. The new sewer connection isn't going to solve the leaky foundation downstairs. So just because you voted no doesn't mean you could just go home, and this is just going to drift off, and we're going to cut more lifeguards that we don't already have. Why do we have lifeguards? Because when you passed overrides that were rejected, services were cut.
But you have a little dune buggy.
So what the Municipal Building Committee needs is direction from Board of Selectmen, direction from the residents, in particular order that would affect, you know, if the Municipal Building Committee was charged with, the project can't be more than $6 million. We creatively come up with a project that tries again to solve the most facility issues in the most economical way with the most long-term value for $6 million. And then we will, you know, have to point out that there are some things that are missing, there are still issues with facilities that will need to be addressed. If these projects are strung out, and they certainly can be, but there are state requirements, state laws, Chapter 30B about requirement of services, Chapter 149, 149A about construction, any project over $1.5 million is going to require the hiring of owner's project manager and a hiring of a designer, an architect, and engineers prescribed by the state. We're not getting out of this by doing something creative and some turnkey or some other way. We're going to have to follow the requirements. And to date, really, what the Municipal Building Committee has been doing has been trying to put a handle on the program, put a handle on the budget, put a handle on the schedule, put a handle on the issues in a way that we can present those and make decisions. You know, I'm sure there's--
And Eric, and we don't really, the group decided not to recommend anything, it kind of comes back to our lap.
Well, it does. It comes back to yours and the residents in order to--
That being said, we have some new people that came in, so I want to set some ground rules again, okay? It is, I'd like to welcome you on once again, it is a bad day, it is a sad day, I'm glad you came. Actually, I'm a deck cutter, I like it, it's a nice day. But when we speak, we are going to have to come up here and speak. The other thing is, we are here to set the warrant. I think people, by a little bit of some of the people that might have spoke when Eric was speaking, you haven't heard from us yet. All of us might feel that we respect the vote, so don't jump on that hust right off the bat, but you haven't heard from us. We're asking for you guys to up and give you, give us some ideas and some solutions, because when everyone just says, go build a police station somewhere, that doesn't work that easily, because there isn't anywhere that we can come up with that has the synergy and sewer. So we're trying to figure out how to do that. So if you're going to get up and say, go build a police station somewhere, please tell us where. So that being said, do not think that this board is cast in stone for maybe trying to make you all vote on the same project again, because we might not be. We're here to hear some solutions, not about the fact that it's been voted on three times, because we've heard it. So what we're trying to get out of the folks here is, is there a better way to do this? So I would like to now buy hands, unless my board wants to say something, because as you know, this board kind of rules by consensus and also listens to its boards and committees within the synergy at Town Hall. If no one else has anything to say, I would like to open this up to the people in this room to speak about solutions. And Dick, you've got to get up, because it won't be heard.
You can hear me from wherever I sit.
No. You sound, well, where's Fred? Fred, you've got to get up.
Where is he? I don't know.
Right there.
Face the camera.
Face the camera, all right.
You put an X right there.
Out of my hairline.
Now make sure everyone else can hear that back.
How's this?
That's perfect.
I want to say, I want to say a couple of things first, and then the third thing, which is what I think might be a suggestion. Hi, Joe.
Excuse me, point of order, can you state your name, please?
My name is Dick Bazergan. I live at 76 Caldwell Farm, but I lived across the street for 30 years on the corner of Green and Hanover.
I know I forgot something. Thanks, Jim.
So let me first say that Eric is a volunteer, extremely qualified guy, gave all his time for no cost. And I think that should be-- Second thing is, the committee, right or wrong, spent a tremendous amount of time trying to figure out what they felt was best for the community. They didn't get paid, they don't benefit from it in any way financially, they just gave their time to make it work. Now, my third thing is, and I don't know that this could work, but I drove by a place on Route One that said 4,800 square feet for rent. Can we take, I don't know, the Town Hall? And can we lease space? Can we go to an independent developer and say, hey, guys, we will guarantee you rent for 10 years at X amount. This is how much space we need for the Town Hall, this is how much we can pay every month, and guess what? You won't have to pay taxes for five years, or 10 years, or whatever the number is. I can't believe there isn't somebody that would jump on that. Now, I know a lot of people in town think that Route One is beautiful. Maybe they haven't drove, driven on it. If you come over that bridge, it's an embarrassment on the right. Somebody wanted to develop that, and we said, oh, we don't want to be rowdy. Oh, my God, it's like a dump. So there's plenty of space that could be developed, that we could lease. Now, not every town, all the surrounding towns have separate fire, separate police, and a separate city Town Hall. Why do we need it all in one? Why can't we move Town Hall out and spend money to redevelop this, to develop this, give this space? Listen, we have to get the police out of that pit downstairs, we all know that. Let them have this upstairs while we work on the downstairs. Maybe that's a solution. Thank you.
Paul.
Hi, Paul Dawbitts. I live on Plum Island. I have been an elected official or an appointed official since I was 21 years old. I've given thousands of hours of time to communities like the town of Newbury. I've been on Planning Board for five years, the Plum Island Water District for eight years, many other, many other committees. I'm still a member of the Media Committee and also a constable. I've consulted to many, many, many communities all over the United States. While I understand all the effort that has gone into the Municipal Building Committee, you know, my brain says, you start with a building committee, then you build. Well, I would have gone back and done an assessment of the town's needs. You know, we're kind of operating the way we did in 1635. You walk into Town Hall, you get different compartments. We're in the digital age. We should be able to access information from our homes, from our computers, from our tablets. So I would have started there. Take a look at what the town's functions are. You know, what are our needs in terms of information? How do we get things done efficiently, effectively? So that's where I would have started. And I would suggest that the town go back and start with a consultant, that is a municipal consultant, to take a look at all of our operations and come back to the town and say, you know, these are some suggestions we have on how the town ought to be operating in the next 50 years, which is the number that's been tossed out over and over again. Again, we're in the digital age. This is not 1635 anymore. Again, I do appreciate all the efforts that the committees have done, but I think we need to go back to square one and do an assessment of the town's requirements and needs, and then come back to the selectmen and say, this is where the town ought to go. It doesn't have to do with equipment, you know, buildings, whatever. I mean, one of the questions I have, and I've been a volunteer fireman, why do we have two fire departments? Has anybody ever asked that?
Tradition, tradition.
The city of Newbury Port has a fire station one mile from here. Have we ever talked to them? So those are some of the questions I think the town needs to take a look at.
Paul, what is your, do you have a Plan B you want to share? This is a lot of people want to speak with. If you could just get to the point, what's your plan? What do you recommend?
I would strongly suggest that the town retain a municipal consultant, in fact, one of the top municipal consultants in North America is in Andover, 30 miles away. For $25,000, have this consultant come in and talk to the different departments, assess the department's needs, look at what they're doing, how are they operating, and come back with a report, which probably be that thick, and then the town could take a look at what its future would be looking like.
Good.
Thanks, Paul. Is that responsive to your question?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's the point, Paul. That's the point. Do me a favor. As we speak, and people engage in audience, and the audience becomes one with the speaker, we still have to come forward, or no one can hear. John, I don't know if it would be better if the speaker stood there, because he projected--
The speaker standing right about where that chair is would be perfect, so people, even if they wanted to line up a little bit behind there, Eric is kind of directing, so--
So just remember this. If there's a speaker speaking and there's something that you want to ask him, you've got to kind of go over at least to that place so people can hear. All right, who else would like to speak? Speak loudly.
Folks, just so you know, this is the only audio, it's directed at the camera here, so that's where it would be helpful.
My name is Luanne Cooter, I live at 5 Hanover Drive, and I have also been on a lot of committees and things like that with the town. I've lived here about 25 years, but I'm from away. I would like to echo Mr. Dawbitts's concerns. I think that the cart was put before the horse. I think that we need to assess, could we go to Regional 911? Could we go to a regional police force? Could we go to, because if you look at how many registered voters there are in this town, there are probably close to 5,000, I'm not 100% sure. Not even 2,000 people voted in any of these elections. So there's a lot of people who really don't care whether we have a police station or we don't have a police station here, or there, or the other place. We could look at regionalizing some of the services. People have talked about this in conjunction with the library in the past. I know, because I was on the COA board, that they have talked about that with the COA, because there's a new COA. The COA wouldn't save much money, because there's, we're not paying any building space, that's in the school, the staff would have to move to Newbury Port, wouldn't do much. 911, we don't need for this size of a town. California has, I believe, less than 40 911--
Nine.
Nine, 511, 911 centers for the whole state of California. Massachusetts has over 300, as far as I--
277.
277, okay. So that is ridiculous. If you were, anybody has ever worked in a business, there is something that they call scale. This town may have had a scale in 1600, it may have had a scale in 1950, but when you look at the cost of computers, electronics, of response times, it might not be. The selectmen, if everybody here has gone to school, they know what is the response of an organism to continue itself. We need to look outside the box. We need to see, does Newbury need to continue the way it is? Or does Newbury need to join with Newbury Port, like we did for Water, with Newbury Port for Police and Fire? Does Newbury need to join with Newbury Port for the library? Does Newbury Port or Byfield need to join with West Newbury for the fire, if they feel that that's-- You know, if we hired a consultant to look at this, because we don't have enough people who are willing to understand the issues and look at the things, it's too small of a town. We're not getting the synergy that we need for those kinds of things. I mean, I like living in a single-family house, I like living in a small town, I like paying one of the lowest tax rates in Newbury, in Massachusetts. But we're not going to be able to continue like that if we don't have some of these public safety issues addressed. And I think that, why not look at Regional 911, Regional Police and Fire, Regional Library, Regional COA, regionalize what could be regionalized and keep what isn't. But it is, three times we've had a vote. The town meeting vote was, I don't believe even 500 people came to that town meeting. So that was a very small urban people. There are 800 people who are going to vote no, maybe 900 people are going to vote no on any election, and we didn't get 1,000 people to vote yes. So I think we have to step back, because I think Eric did do a lot of work, and his committee did a lot of work. But until the people are ready to move forward on a building, doing a building is not it. And I think we need to look at regionalization, and that's my case.
Luanne asked about the number of voters. I will give you our current totals. Residents in town are 6,293 residents. We have 4,916 registered voters.
Can I just say one thing about that? You have to remember that the town of Newbury has four--
Lisha.
The town of Newbury has four schools within its walls, and those schools plus people in, the governors, they live there. So our community may only be 6,200, but from September through June, it swells to, I don't know, John, do you know how much, how many? The population goes--
About 14 in the Triton, and I'm not sure--
14 at the high school, so probably though it's nine, and then the elementary school, so it goes up by about another 4,000, 4,000 people.
The elementary school people live here all year round.
Yeah, oh, that's true too, but the teachers too.
Bob?
Bob Connors, Annapolis Way, and like many in this room, I've served on a number of boards. I served on a board, it was called the Site Selection Committee. It was the original kind of grassroots effort to look at different sites around the, around the city, a town, for a municipal complex. And one of the things we looked at was regionalization. One of the criteria we looked at, and here's what I want to share with you. Newbury's fire budget for two fire stations is about $500,000. The payroll for Newbury Port's two fire stations is $2 million alone. So to rationalize regionalization, we will never get it at this cost, it will just double, and we will wind up absorbing whatever cost benefit packages that Newbury Port or another regional partner is offering. Police, same thing. Newbury Port police officers, a patrolman, are paid 38% more than a average Newbury patrolman, and that's why we have a turnover of police, because they come here, they get their training, they love the community, but when a slot comes open in a surrounding town, they can get a 20 to 30 or 40% raise. So again, if you're going to regionalize, are we going to have less police? The answer's no. You're going to pay, you're going to have the same number of police, and hopefully even more, and you're going to be paying 38% higher on your average wage. So from a regionalization standpoint, those are some of the things, these are all great ideas. We've all looked at this. You know, to Paul's point, the first thing that was done was a needs assessment. It was going through each and every department in the police station and Town Hall and saying, what do we need for file space? What do you have for file space? How many employees do we have? You know, by law, you need so many square feet for our employees. So the needs assessment and the space allocation was done based on a very detailed professional approach that you can't get from a consultant. Well, in all honesty, the parties that were involved in all of this setup did an outstanding job. No stone was unturned. We've all been talking about this for years. I'd like to do a poll, a vote right now. Does everyone in this room believe that we need to do something with the police station? Just raise your hand if that's the case. Is there anyone that doesn't feel we should do something at the police station? Because I'd like to hear from that person to let us know what their thoughts are. Regionalization only going to cost us more money. So getting back to, I mean, you can go, here's what you can do. If you have any questions, go to the Newbury Port website, and you can go right to their town clerks and look up their annual budget, and it'll tell you line item for line item, what it is. Compare that to Newbury. One of the things about a partnership and regionalization does, what's the cost to get in? What's the cost to get out? Once you regionalize your police, you regionalize your fire, there's really no going back to having a municipal department. And then you lose control of your costs, because you get a bill. And as costs rise, you just lose control. So all good options. Now, a lot's been made about this vote. 793 people voted yes, and over 1,000 voted no. Now, there's, it's time to listen to our voters, and I really think that, if you look at Newbury Port, they just did a massive debt override. It won by 80%. And you know why? Because everybody was on board, everybody was informed, and it was modified and tweaked. And maybe not everything was done at one time, and there's some other components that may have to be done at a later date, but they hit a home run at 80% as an overwhelming override support. But they hit a home run at 80% as an overwhelming override support. And I think, I don't wanna see this win by a vote or lose by a vote. I wanna see us garner 2/3 of this town that feels strongly enough that we get this done. So we all know something needs to be done. And the way I see this, the voters have said, we understand. There was not one letter to the editor or comment at any meaning that we don't need to do nothing for the police, that everything is fine. That in itself is a great accomplishment. What the vote says is what's been presented. And it's been presented in good faith because it gives you the lowest long-term cost over 50 years. What I read is the voters are saying, we hear you. We're not willing to make this type of investment at this time. Come back with a Plan B that we can live with. And maybe we have to do this at two steps and not just one step. And what I would suggest simply is this. All the work that's been done, we're putting sewer into this building. It's centrally located. It's really the only site for a police station. If you're gonna do the police station, then you need to consider doing the town hall because you need to do it all at one time. I would suggest that we go back to, or at least entertain, doing a town hall, police station on this site. But we can't forget the fire station. And quite frankly, I think what we need to do, because they have their needs over there. I think what we need to do is consider working on a partnership with the fire department, acquiring that property, because town hall needs additional parking and the fire station needs a sewer tie-in, and they have some structural deficiencies that need to be addressed. It's not the 50-year solution, but it's that 12 to 15-year midterm fix. And I think if we can look at something in this fashion, the 11.5, 12 million number can come back down, possibly in the 7, 7.5 million dollars. And what we do is, we get, we do the right thing. We solve a town hall problem, we solve a police station problem. They're now on sewer, they're on water, they have proper fire protection. And it's the 50-year solution. Step two is, we buy some time at the fire station, but we have the option and we saw their immediate needs. And if we take a look at it in that fashion, what you're likely gonna have is, I think Gene Case made a great presentation at the Finance Committee. And it was basically looking at what we're paying in debt now and when it's retiring and what the whole project was gonna cost. And it was gonna be approximately a net increase of $50 or $60 on your average tax bill per year. This debt we're paying now is gonna be retired and we were just replacing it. If we look at a Plan B, Plan A is the way to go because over 50 years, it looks great. It'll be the cheapest amount of money. That's not what the voters are telling us right now. They're saying you gotta come back with something else, an alternative. A Plan B could likely come back in that 7 to 8 million dollar range, I think. And it would have a zero impact. You would have, you would replace existing debt for new debt. That $200 would wipe out one, you know, to another. We have a lot of free cash sitting around. It's time to invest some of that. But I think, that's my thought on this. But please, when you see Eric up here, he's one of the most highly respected architects in his business. There's no other firm or no other qualifications that exceed this man's. And their mission, and we've all had this discussion, their mission was, our job is to present to you the best solution, the most economical cost over 50 years. That's what they've done. And that's the price tag that came with it. So now, what do we wanna do? We all know we gotta do something. So where do we start and where do we finish? Thank you.
I can point it to her.
He can turn it forward.
Why don't you just sit right down, Elba? I can point it right at you. I will make an exception for you, Elba.
Everybody hear me? I don't think I need a microphone. Which way you want me to turn?
The only one you... Well, go ahead.
Turn this way, okay. I'm Alba Gulthoff, 7 Plum Island Boulevard, Newbury, Mass., United States of America. Free to speak without fear, free to speak without intimidation. And thus, I wanted to address the Board of Selectment first. Thank you for having this meeting. Thank you for having Mr. Thorlo here. He speaks the truth. I agree with him on everything he says except for one thing. And I wanna thank Mr. Fram the other night. I'm not supposed to call him Mr. Fram, that's his father's name, so Steve Fram, for saying, please don't insult the voters, Mr. Walker. I've heard too many things about the people don't understand the meaning of the word no. I don't have a dog in this race. I don't have a horse in this race. My next move will be either in heaven or in hell. So do you think I'm gonna worry about paying taxes? No, I'm not gonna worry about paying taxes. But all these people that I see in here, that I was here since 1972 working with and for, I worry about them. Now I have to explain something to somebody else on the Board of Selectment. You are supposed to represent us. We are supposed to go to you people and say what we want and what we don't want. Yeah, I can't help it if no one's ever around like we used to have people around. It's not our fault that we have nobody to come in and say, gee, I wish, gee, could you listen to us? No, you always turn a deaf ear. Let's go to the Board of Finance. A man said they won 4 to 1 at a meeting I couldn't go to because I can't leave my house because I live in the dark now. I cannot live there without a street light. So therefore, I stay home. I don't go to any meetings because I'm afraid to come back home at night. When I heard that he said that, I wanted to come out as scared as I was and say to the man, you know you wouldn't have a vote 4 to 1 at a meeting if you didn't have it intimidated by all the men in blues standing around, waiting to see who's gonna come out and where they live and where they're gonna go on the way home. Many people have called me and said, why do we need all the policemen there? Intimidation is a terrible thing. Intimidation should not be had in a little town where we all bonded many, many years ago. There's such a thing as called an Australian ballot. That would be work fine. I've heard many people say, gee, Alba, if you would have, if you know what's to get up and say that, they would probably turn to that. You'll have more of a turnout too, because people will come as soon as they find out there's an Australian ballot. Do you know what an Australian ballot is? An Australian ballot is a ballot where you vote in secret, just like when you come to our little cubby holes when we voted the polls. Speaking of voting at the polls, I've worked on the polls since 1972. I was very insulted this year when I read in the paper that somebody out of the blue accused somebody of saying something, which might have been true, I don't know, but it certainly wasn't down here because I've been here many years and never heard anyone. You know what I have heard at the polls? I have heard, we have never, never had this mistrust in the town of Newbury as we have today. The town is separated so badly, it's a... I'm ashamed to say it, I really am. I really am. And my solution, it might sound funny, but you're looking for big space and you said the other night, and I couldn't come to the meeting because again, I was home. You came while sewerage. I got a perfect place for you to build a town. I believe that the police station needs to be built. It's a disgrace downstairs, a part of disgrace. I worked above it for many years when Ralph Law was here. When we first had it, there was nobody. There was an office here. We should build it behind Plum Island Pumping Station. That's a big, huge area. It belongs to the town already. You don't have to buy it. What is the qualify? How many miles from the store does it have to be? How many miles from the bank does it have to be? How many miles from the green does it have to be? You don't have to worry about anything. There's your land already. You've got lots of room. You can build your little station to put your cars in and another one. You can clean out the back. Then you know what? I was so thrilled. Some engineers came down and they were measuring. I thought, oh, I'm not the only one thinking that they're gonna come. No, they were measuring that to put a parking lot in a parking lot. Can you believe that? Only this time, they're gonna put a big, beautiful machine in and cost money and trust the people to put the money in there and then run off to the beach. So I guess that's my alternative. I don't care. I pay care for everybody else and naturally, my taxes will go up for whatever months I have left. But you know what? In the long run, I'm not gonna have to pay it. But these people are all gonna pay it. So I think you should look for one place for the police station, a nice police station, maybe that the last 50 years. The same at the town hall. Can you tell me what's changed in the past three years? Town hall was always big enough when I was here all the time. What happened all of a sudden? How come we need all these dangling participles? We never needed them before. Board of Health was right here. Board of Health and I shared, the what was his name? The Hubber Master, he was here. Everybody was in here. Now all of a sudden, we have to have dangling participles. It doesn't make any sense. Can you explain that to me? So thank you all for coming. I think it's a wonderful display of everybody caring. No matter which way you vote, it's your own business, but that's my humble feelings. And I think it's about time that somebody gets their act together and really finds out what's really going on in the town of Newbury. And again, you are elected to do as the people want you to do. We can't just all speak. You see what happens when everybody speaks, it takes time. That's why there's five of you. In the beginning, there was only three of you. And there's five of you not to tell us what to do. When we come to you, we ask you if you'll please say it, just as they do city councils in Newburyport. So thank you all for coming and God bless.
If you'd like to speak, come on up this way so we can have kind of a queue. It's hard to...
Fred Thorlo, Mashavon. Elba, that sounds like a great idea. The town owns that property, but will it be there in 50 years? Will Plum Island be there in 50 years? I don't think we're gonna build anything on Plum Island. I hope we're not gonna build anything on Plum Island because if what they're talking about is true, it may not be there. But I was not gonna say much today because, especially sitting there, because I agreed about 1,000% with Dick Fodgman. But my main point here right now is, seems to me your job today is to set an agenda for the next town meeting. My point is, I don't believe that you are prepared at all to do anything for this matter on that meeting.
And before, I recognize someone else. Elba, all those things were certainly noted for me anyway, and Fred. And remember, when we talked about this earlier, we said that we weren't caught on bringing this back to the voters. We heard the voters. So please, don't put words into us that aren't there. Secondly, okay, we are not gonna push to slam something on just so everyone knows for this time one. We actually heard Fred, we heard Bob, and Elba said some of that too. We're being as thoughtful as we can. We thought we were being thoughtful before. I gotta be honest, if I am running the Board of Selectment in underhanded way by listening to my boards and committee and asking the people of the town to come here and help me, please, what the hell am I doing wrong? Because I don't understand. I don't understand where the secret stuff is. We run this board by total consensus. I don't try to push any decisions through. So in the perspective of trying to solve a problem, let's try to remain on that. If you wanna come to a Selectment meeting, call us crooks and whatever you wanna do, do it then. All right, thank you. Who's next? Michael? Oh, I didn't see you, Carrie. Hello.
I'm Carrie Kebble, 1 Basin Front Drive. And the police station, there was a time when the Governor's Academy out on Route 1 offered us land for like a 99-year lease for a dollar a year or something like that. I don't know what happened to that offer, but that, you know, certainly out on Route 1, it's centrally located. And, you know, has that been looked at again? And is that off the table?
Yes, it was vetted by the Municipal Building Committee. This has been covered in two other...
Who's speaking, please?
My name is Erica Coles Jacobson. I live at 15 Scotland Road. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I have, like many of the members up here, have been in many of these meetings as the process has gone through. That site was definitely looked at. Presented a few issues that Eric knows in more detail, but one of the things was that we did not have the total space that was needed. And it would also, like with regionalization, would tie the town into any future developments at Governors. Meaning that there'd be some, the cost to connect to their sewer there was cost prohibitive. The other part was that as they needed to build that facility out to handle increased volume, we would be on the price tag for that. So when you started looking at it, what was looked at as a free offer of space or land was going to cost us a lot more than other options. So that's why, so please, that's been at least three public meetings that have been recorded that has been completely vetted.
I wasn't at those meetings.
Yeah, but that's what we...
I thought I was allowed to ask the question.
Thank you for asking. Thank you, because it clarifies why we hear a lot.
I mean, don't think you're the only one that didn't, you know, understand that. So it was a good question.
I do look at the website, okay? And I tried to go on to see what was on the agenda and those things. And I heard somebody say, like, you know, the building committee, you know, and these plans and everything. I could have connected to those and seen those. That would be nice. And maybe this was discussed too, but I'm here now, so I'm gonna ask. Has it been thought about a debt exclusion as opposed to an override?
That was... It was.
Okay. And the other thing is, when I come in to vote on this particular thing, when I see it and I read it, I don't see a price tag. I've heard price tags. I've seen how much, you know, it's supposedly gonna cost us. And I feel like I'm writing a blank check, okay? It says nothing about how much it's gonna cost and then anything else attached. What's anything else that's, you know, attached? I don't know. So that makes me uncomfortable, just so that you know that.
Thank you. Do you want me to answer the question about why it's not...
We can. And I mean, Alicia was gonna do it, but some of the reasons that things get put on the ballot in a certain way is because of Master General Law, Town Council. What were you gonna say? Go ahead.
As I say, the language on the ballot is not meant to be distrustful or secretive. It has to be approved by Bond Council. When we did this, this was a debt exclusion override, which meant we were asking the voters to let us borrow. So it wasn't override, but it's both. It's debt exclusion override. However, the way the question is worded and if, when it comes up again, because doing nothing is not an option, it will not have a number on it because we cannot put a number on it based on the way Bond Council and our town legal council have told us that it has to be written. It has to be written in a certain way. Every one of these things, in order to do it, we need to vote to do the debt exclusion and that needs to be on a paper ballot at the polls. So to absorb debt, the voters have to approve it there. To actually spend the money, that has to be approved at town meeting. So it's a two-step process every time. It's let us borrow the money, then let us spend the money. And that's both times, all of the voters are included in that decision-making. So it is a two-step process. And if this goes forward to build a police station, we're gonna need to borrow money. We can't do it with what we have. So that's gonna be there. So it's not, no one up here is trying to do it in a distrustful way. And they cannot exceed the expenditure that is approved at town meeting. And those are always given, we are very, very, very cautious when we do that, a not-to-exceed number. And when that number comes in less, if we, like with the sewer connection here, the amount that we appropriated for that, it's gonna come in less. That money's coming back to the town in the form of free cash. So those are just some of the, to clarify the points.
Okay, and John, one thing too, so that you realize this. The Finance Committee is really the spokes, you know, the mouthpiece for the town. They really watch out for the money for the folks in our town. We use them for advice. And they've been very, very vested in trying to make this as clear as possible to make sure that the numbers were easy for us to communicate to you folks. So this isn't just the Selectment. There are many pieces, including planning board and everything else, that have worked to try to make this understandable. And we will continue to do that. John, you're right here. Go ahead.
My name is John Ashton. I live over 21th Street in Byfield. And first of all, I would like to thank all those involved who have brought to the forefront a very troublesome problem. Without them, we wouldn't be here now.
John, louder.
The voters have voted and the results are as they are. However, the problem still exists and I fear we should all come together to try and solve it. I feel all problems can be solved as it is a matter of finding the right key to the door. I believe that people like the concept of improving the police station, the fire station, and the town hall. But to approve an improvement plan, they need to have a clear idea of the expected results, especially total costs and eventual taxpayer impact. And to feel that all aspects of the project are reasonable and reflect the best interest of all the people in town. So let's come together with an idea that has a general consensus of the voters, which I think can be derived in part from holding community roundtable discussions. Once we've settled on a detailed concept, let's first present it to the voters at large neighborhood gatherings. This way, when it's presented to town meeting, people will be able to vote with an educated consciousness. I feel confident that this approach will work. If any of you are familiar with the yellow school, If any of you are familiar with the yellow school, we got that vote at the town meeting, it was 400 to nothing. And that's exactly how we went at it. We went to different neighborhoods and explained to people the nuts and bolts and exactly what's happening. And that wasn't really done here. They gave an effort out at different meetings, but nobody went to really the homes of the people to tell them.
I did that.
Yes, we did.
Okay. With the preceding--
It's okay.
With the preceding in mind, I would like to offer the following less costly alternative improvement approaches for consideration and discussion. First, to raise the town hall two feet off its foundation to create the needed environment and functional improvements for the police. Second, remove the town hall roof and install a prefabricated third floor with an addition on the left side as we look at the front of the building from the street. The addition would be supported by a drive-through entrance with a foyer and an elevator providing handicap access to all three floors. Many needed, make needed improvements to the existing town hall to improve its functionality. Build a new, separate, prefabricated fire station on the land the fire department will continue to own. I think all the intentions are good, whether it is yes or no to the original proposal. So let's get together and discuss this and other plans in a positive and problem-solving frame of mind. And I think Paul Dombic's idea of we had put the horse before the cart is to go and see what we really need. I mean, we're hearing what we need, but what do we really need? Thank you.
Jeff, if I could just add to that, one thing. Not that I support or don't support that idea, but this building was originally two stories, when it was a Grange Hall, and the second floor burned off. But this was originally a two-story building.
Mark, before, before we take the next person, can you quickly go up to, we'll call it the microphone, and just speak very, very quickly about what you did and what your group did? Because I'm not sure they understand as a group, how much effort you put in and the group put in. Just so we preclude some of the facts that we didn't reach out. And he's not prepared, so pay it with him.
I did not volunteer for this discussion. Mark Gleckman, 28th Review Drive in Newbury. I certainly don't want this conversation--
Say it again, please.
Mark Gleckman, G-L-E-C-K-M-A-N. This conversation should not be a referendum on vote yes, which I was a part of. Nor should it be a referendum on any group or individual who may have voted no. This is about the needs of this community, and as Jeff said at the beginning of the meeting, making suggestions that'll move it forward. Throughout this summer, I've been committed to the notion that the proposal as presented by the MBC is the right proposal. I haven't wavered on that for a second, and I don't waver on it today. If you had told me four months ago that all of this could be accomplished, and that through retiring existing debt and layering this debt on top of it, it would cost me a net impact of $51 a year, I'd vote for it then and I'd vote for it now. I think anything other than that is shortsighted, and in the long run will cost me more money. This is not about any of you, this is about me. It would cost me more money to do it another way. Having said that, I think the practical approach now is to hold on to that Plan A, because I think in the long run it might be the best one, but also offer the voters an alternative. And I suggested at the MBC meeting the other night, two things, and I would offer that same suggestion today. Immediately hire a structural engineer to find out what the real integrity of that fire station is. Let's find out. We know that it's heading towards the dinosaur age pretty quickly, but just how quickly, none of us really know. We know it has lots of structural needs. If it has a 15 or 20-year shelf life left, okay, then there's a viable option. As long as whatever the proposal is has money appropriated for this fire station, I'm okay with it. So number one, let's find out how bad the fire station really is. Number two, let's hire that owner's project manager now, so that at town meeting, even on a project basis, even on a three-week basis, have that owner's project manager who is not tied in any way to this Board of Selectment, the MBC, or the town for that matter, an independent party, explain to the voters, chapter and verse, of what this process will look like at town meeting. Every step of the way, from A to Z, this is how a good, municipally-oriented OPM will protect the interests of the taxpayers, making sure that the right facility is constructed for the right amount of dollars. Thank you.
Mike, you're gonna be next, because I pointed you, but this gentleman was standing on the--
My name is Bob Courier. I live on Plum Island. I've lived there for two years, and I've been visiting there for the last 12, 15 years. Plum Island is an interesting place to live, and it has, and it has been developed over the last five, 10 years. Mix of the people there is changing. There's retired people there that are coming from outside of our area, moving in. They're very bright, they're very smart. They want to know several questions. And it goes back to the article that Peter Erickson put in the paper about trust. They want to know how they take $286 million worth of assessed valued property in Plum Island, which relates to $3 million in taxes, it comes off island, what comes back? Very little kids in the school system. We don't get any lifeguards, we don't get any dumpsters, but I see the dumpster being emptied out behind this building. We don't have any porta-potties that pay for by the private businesses. So, public trust is when the town of Newbury officials, they provide those services, you start to build trust. So some of our $3 million comes back. Without providing these services, there's no public trust for the town of Newbury. No public trust means one thing. No vote for the dislike that the Newbury Selectmen show and demonstrate to the people of Plum Island. So, you get no votes, they're organized, all of these people have husbands and wives, they have neighbors, they all sit up and they march forward, they say, "We're not gonna vote for this." Doesn't matter whether it's needed. Everybody agrees that fire station, police station, municipal services need to be helped. But you're gonna have to get the trust first. Once the Selectmen demonstrate the trust to the voters in Plum Island, and then watch which way they vote, the next election comes around. Everyone agrees that there is a need for municipal upgrading, but since there's more than 50% don't trust you-- Excuse me, you're gonna have to speak louder, because I'm getting no sound. A no vote, a no vote calls. Gain that trust, and you get a yes vote, and you want to pass it. That's it.
Mike Doyle, Six, we're gonna have Newbury. I'm on the Municipal Building Committee. Mike Doyle, I'm on the Municipal Building Committee. One of the things, I've got a little history, before the first vote, six weeks before the vote, we were all set to go with the new police station recommended at the Selectment, okay? The fire department at the time had said, "No." They didn't want to be part of this. They came along, six weeks before the election, and they said, "We want to get involved." And I said, "You're gonna muck the vote," and they did. Okay? The people have spoken twice now. I said, "We have, as a committee, we are all set, we have the information from the police station." I personally contacted seven police stations in the area in Massachusetts on what they needed, what the shortfalls were. We have got a plan already to go for police station. I feel that's the way we should go right now.
Say your name. My name is Rich Capalupo. I live at 32 Rolfe Lane. I've been around here for 50 years. I have, I voted in favor of this once in the past, and there's no question that certain improvements and construction is needed. I don't understand why you're not over there, so I can address the--
I didn't put it here. I'm on the camera, guys.
So, I jotted down a couple of things in no particular order, that I don't expect you to defend yourself. I think that what's important here is that you slow down on trying to sell the project, and you start listening to the spirit of what everybody's saying. It will sell itself eventually. I'd also like to say, good job to all of you folks that have spent so much time on this. There's no doubt, the homework is all done, you've done your studies, more, hiring more professionals and consultants at $20,000 to $30,000 per crack, it's probably redundant in most cases. In my humble opinion, the biggest problem here is, is that I don't want to see $11 million spent on a building that ends up way too fancy with all sorts of unnecessary frills. So, you know, obviously, Savan, in your world, six or seven or eight hundred dollars per square foot is commonplace. It's not shocking. And a $10 million project is probably commonplace as well. To us folks here, six or seven hundred dollars per square foot is a crap load of money. And 10 or 11 million dollars, maybe even 12 or 13 or 14 by the time we get done, is a lot of money. The other huge problem that I have is that I see in towns around us that after you, after we spend all this money and we build this beautiful building that has way too many fancy frills on it, it's a steady process downhill, leading to, in 30 years from now, us all, or our children sitting in this room saying, "Oh, you're not gonna believe it. That old place that we built 30 years ago, it's got, you know, it's had a leaky roof, and the mold is carrying it away, and we did a study, and we gotta bulldoze this building and build a, you know, a $40 million building this time." So, I think this is a generic problem in our world whereby we vote to build assets, and there's no meaningful maintenance plan in place, and a Class A building that should last 50 years or better, doesn't, you don't get the full life out of it. And it's hard money to budget and spend, because it starts almost the first, you know, after you put the last coat of paint on, this upkeep that I'm referring to. Triton Regional School, we did a $30 million, was it a $30 million renovation? I was on the committee. Dick Bazergan, how many years ago? 10? Seems like it was yesterday, but probably 10 years ago. And don't you know, and we renovated the track, by the way, don't you know, we're gonna renovate the track again. So, we're not getting the longevity out of the big dollars that we're spending. If we're gonna build something that's Class A, it has to last forever. I'm, excuse me?
Sorry.
This town is full of houses that are 100 and 200 years old. There's a way to get it done. Dick Bazergan, I don't always agree with him, because usually he's up for spending big dollars. But I think he came up with a brilliant idea that will take us away from having to spend this kind of money. And I agree with every word he said. The entities all don't have to be under the same roof physically. As long as they're, you know, connected by wire, which everybody is already, they can be spread out. And I think it makes perfect sense to have the fire and police departments together side by side, because they have very similar needs. Moving this, the town hall to another place for 10 or 20 years, or whatever lease you might have to sign, is great, because you can try it out, number one. Number two, that guy only spent $150 per square foot to generate that space, and his ROI doesn't have to be anywhere near what we're gonna spend here to end up with new space. It's a, you could rent 5,000 square feet for a relative bargain, and then every 10 years, move to another place, or every 20 years, move to another place, when that place is worn out.
Or build your own in 10 years, if it's the right time.
Right. I agree. So, I'm off that temporarily. I agree with, do not discount 800 negative votes. That's a lot of people against. You need to, I know that you guys have got it all figured out, but there has to be another way. Okay? I'm gonna get fast, I'm hard, sorry for holding everybody up. As far as being, you guys being disappointed, I don't think that you should be. The process requires that you, you guys spend a lot of time and do your homework. And then the second phase of the process always is, you've got to sell. And it's not an easy sell. And everybody knew it wasn't gonna be an easy sell, so I wish you wouldn't be disappointed. And the time when the rubber meets the road is after you've done all your work, and it leaves you all sitting there saying, "But where were you guys the whole way through?" Well, I don't know about you guys, but I was working my 16 hours a day, six or seven days a week. And the only time that I can piece together a few hours is when it is time for the rubber to meet the road, and I do that with the hope that you've delivered a bulletproof product that I can buy into. Which you just about have, but the ongoing maintenance, and I don't want to see a building with gold leaf and copper and stonework and all kinds of other fancy stuff that just costs a lot of money to maintain and makes everybody look better than we have to, in my opinion. You know, this expense, oh, and I definitely don't want to answer this now, but are we heading towards a unionized police and fire department?
Police are unionized.
Police are unionized, too.
Are we heading in the direction of that with the fire department, too?
Fire department--
We don't, we're not part of that. We don't know.
Well, if and when we end up there, and we have to staff that 24/7 with two or three or four guys, because you know, the fire department code says we have to do that, that's gonna be huge, huge dollars. And I'm hoping that that's further away than-- So I said, just, I hope that out of this meeting comes some sort of response on the guys that you deem, on the stuff that you deem is important. For you to sit there and try to convince me now, I don't want you to do that, you don't have to, but you can if you want. I got two more things. As far as the blank check that somebody mentioned, you know, the items, the articles not having an amount, there has to be a way to insert some dollar amount, even if it's just a sentence at the end that says, "We were dreaming one night, and we think it's gonna be approximately X amount of dollars." Because this, I agree, the blank check thing doesn't work in my business world or construction world. If I ever said to my customers, "Don't worry about a thing, I'll take care of you," it just doesn't, it leaves that very uncomfortable taste. And some of the beating that you might be feeling, you don't deserve, it's just because we see other things going on in other towns. You're done with me?
Erica, could you restate that, about whatever's voted at town hall, you can't spend past that?
That's, okay, so--
What was the question?
Okay, this is back to the wording of the articles, the wording on the ballot. The wording on the ballot is determined by Town Council and Bond Council, and has to be worded a specific way, and we cannot insert a dollar figure in there. The amount the town can spend, and what the town approves to spend, is approved at town meeting. And that's when you get the dollar figure of the not-to-exceed number. And that's the way we've done all, every town meeting I've been involved with, when we stand up there, and there's the articles that go on the warrant, and then what is actually presented and voted on is what is spoken that night at town meeting. So it may change, because we have to do a certain number of weeks in advance, we publish the articles on the warrant. What is actually spoken and talked about, discussed on the floor at town meeting is what is voted, and that's that not-to-exceed number. And we don't spend beyond that not-to-exceed number. We can't. So there's no way that anyone is ever writing a blank check to the town.
So, just to jump in with a--
All right, and really quickly, people are starting to line up all here, and I know you're raising your hand. Jump over there and grab the line.
Current construction cost for just the construction is at $408. I have a list of about 25 current projects that are either built in the last year or the next year from an architect that does the service, and probably like to get on this project, that could state that. So that's not the time for this. Salisbury's police station is around 425, 430 a square foot. It is for a steel-framed building. And if we get into the next phase, and we can decide on a site, we can decide on what the project can be, then modular, steel-framed, wood-framed could all be tested out.
All right, thanks. Thank you, by the way, these are all great ideas. Thank you, everyone. Go ahead.
My name is Michelle Britt Thompson. I live over at 3A Black--
My name is Michelle Britt Thompson. I live over at three A Black Duck Circle. And I just wanted to say, just kinda give my perspective as someone who's in the forty-something range with young children who attend our schools. And I think part of the problem is, is that there aren't a lot of people here like me. There are not a lot of people here that are my age. And when I talk to people about this vote and about this meeting, they're like, "Oh, my God, really? I had no idea." And to me, that is the problem. Because if they knew, they would've voted yes. And I gotta tell you, just giving my perspective, when I found out that the vote was overturned and voted no, I wanted to move. I am embarrassed to live here. And I gotta tell you, other people in the same age range feel the same. It is embarrassing.
So, how do we.
Thank you, Michelle.
I think we need to educate people of my generation, my age.
Don't use that word, please. Don't use that word. I cited one of my things.
Don't use what word?
What was that?
Don't use what word?
Don't say you have to educate them. They are educated.
No, they don't know.
As the man in Byfield said, they voted no for reason.
They don't know. No, there are people that are of my age, with children my age.
Well, not all people.
I'm telling you, the people who I talk to.
That's an insult to people.
I'm telling you, the people who I talk to of my age have no idea of what's going on.
I'm not much older than you.
Great.
Hold it. All right, let's knock the stop. Next. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Pearson. I live on eleven Coursebrook Drive in Byfield.
Please, I don't mean you. I mean them.
I'm Sharon Pearson. I live on eleven Coursebrook Drive in Byfield, and I've lived there over forty years. And I am proud of my town. I am proud of all the men who have served on it for giving their time and effort and not getting paid, not getting any thank you whatsoever. I believe we need a new fire, a police station. I believe that one hundred percent. If we could find a place to put it and a reasonable cost to build it, I'd be on the bandwagon to vote yes. And I'd go around telling everybody to do it. I don't know why we have to take over the fire department. It's privately owned by its members. Then if we take that over, then the town owns it. Byfield is the same as Newbury Fire. They're privately owned. Their fire station was deplorable. It was unbelievable. Those guys got together, they put on all sorts of different venues, and they saved their money, they planned ahead, and they built a beautiful building that we should be proud of. Those guys over there don't get a thank you, don't get the town standing up saying, "We need to take this over and help these guys out." When they fall on their face, they have to pick themselves up. Now, you know, town hall, yeah, needs to be fixed. Police station needs it desperately. There's a piece of property on, at the circle, the old circle finishing. It's got sewer and water there. It did have problems, but a local contractor cleaned up the area. There might be some issues with Concom, but I don't know. I'm sure as a town, we can work it out. There was, of course, you should never go to Byfield, but there was that Big Apple Building in Byfield to sale for a million dollars. Beautiful, brand-new building. Elevators, the works. Town wouldn't even look at that. That's Byfield. What the hell are we gonna go to Byfield for? So, you know, let's build a police station. Let's find a spot. Let's look at a plan. Let's get it together and build a police station. Then we can fix this town hall. Nothing wrong with the town hall. The police station's been the way it's been. Like I said, I've lived here forty years or more, and it's been this way since I've lived here, so it's not something that just happened overnight. It's been like this for a long time. It got money offset aside from FEMA years ago when there was a big flood in the area. Somebody dropped the ball. They didn't find, finish the paperwork, never got done. That's not my fault. That's the fault of the people who are in charge of this town. They should look at everything that needs to be done. They should look at the right ways doing things instead of craning it down our throats and telling us we're not educated and telling us that we don't know what a no vote means. I know how I voted. I don't need to be educated any further. You need to be educated and listen to what we're saying. New police station? I'm not gonna take over the fire station. If you wanna take over Newbury Fire Station, then you better buy out Byfield. Here's fair.
Please, some individuals have a chance to speak up.
I forgot to say something, John Ashton again. I forgot to say something when I was up here before. And that is the cost with what I'm talking about. To raise the town hall off its foundation, two feet off the foundation, would be about five hundred thousand dollars. I rate to completely do over the fire station would be about a million. To remove the town hall roof and put a prefab third floor on there with an elevator to three floors would be about a million dollars. To make the needed improvements to the town hall is about five hundred thousand. To build a new separate fire station, if needed, would be about a million and a half. I think the Byfield Fire Station cost about nine hundred thousand dollars a few years ago that it was built. I'm coming up with about four and a half million dollars. That's to do everything. Now, I realize that when you do municipal buildings, the cost sometimes can triple. I think this is a good alternative, and if the selectmen would so deem it, I would like to look into it further and come back to them with some hard figures. The other thing I wanted to mention about, the lady here from the finance committee said, when you go out to bid and you get a bond and you come in with less money, that money goes to free cash. Why doesn't it go to reduce the bond? Why does it go to have them have money?
We can pay down the debt with free cash. It's a step process, though. It's just the way it has to.
I think that should be written into the original agreement, that if there is, if there is free cash, the free cash directly reduce the bond. Thank you.
Glenn DiArmond, I live at two forty-three High Road. Just a couple of things. First of all, I ought to rather, probably badly quote Yogi Berra, "You don't know what you don't know." The, one, there are a group of people here that are both positive or negative about how the vote went, and voters have spoken, but you know a quantity, you don't necessarily know the why behind it, except for the people who have spoken here. A cheaper, free way to find out, at least it's why some people voted no, is online, something like Survey Monkey. People can put a query together on Survey Monkey, signs up and down High Road, letting people know. Go online, tell us why you voted no, or perhaps why you voted yes, what information they might need in order to change the no to yes. Again, some people here have gotten a chance to speak, but they're not eight hundred and some people here. So, that's number one. With respect to a lady who was talking about people needing to be educated, the, what Newbury is facing is the same dilemma that a lot of communities are. I'll speak for myself. I'm out the door at quarter to five in the morning to go to work, and I'm generally home at six at night. It's sort of a bedroom community. There's a certain percentage of people here who are those people. Up in the morning, get up, come back home, you're exhausted, town hall meetings, I'm pooped. I'm going to bed. That's what you're gonna get a lot of here. How do you educate those people so that they know what's going on here and know the needs? I don't know that there are any really simple answers to that. The information, I mean, everybody's done their homework here. There are more questions to be answered, but how do you get that to people who get up in the morning, go to work and come home, and don't pay attention to anything other than making a living and doing the other stuff? It's not an easy, there's no easy answers to that. They have, you know, you have to educate yourself if, you know, if you wanna know what's going on in your town and you care about it, you gotta, you gotta do your own homework. I mean, not you, we, you know, the people. So, I don't necessarily know that there are really any easy answers to that, but outreach, I don't know much, where you could go. That's basically it.
Thank you. State your name again.
I know. My name is Ed Hammer, seventy-three Claret Street. I'd like to talk about. Ed Hammer, seventy-three Claret Street. I'd like to talk about the space between the firehouse and the town hall. I did a rough measurement. It's sixty-three feet by ninety feet. And if that's two floors, excavated, it'd be the same height as this. That's eleven thousand four hundred square feet. It seems to me, it seems like a good area to put a police station and expand the town hall. That's all I'm gonna say.
Mark, I want to apologize in advance for being up here a second time. I did not anticipate Jeff calling me up the first time we talked about voting. Forgot a couple of important points. At four-thirty this morning, I wrote a note to the Board of Selectmen, Tracy, so I'll see something about my life, thanking them. That's all I said was thank you. Regardless of how this turns out today, I thank them for their wisdom in putting together what I thought is a good plan. I thank them for the courage to do it in the face of what they know was gonna be some shop criticism. And I thank them for the patience to do something like this morning. And I haven't heard a lot of thank yous to the board. What I've heard is accusations. What I've heard is suggestions that they don't care, they don't listen, they don't respect. I don't feel any of that. I think if they did, they wouldn't be here today. And so, you know, if at the end of this long, twisty road, we end up with potentially two proposals side by side, which is proposal A, as suggested, and proposal B, which is probably a cheaper, less complex proposal, and then put those in front of the voters, I think it would satisfy most, if not all, of the people in this room. I would advocate for it. Let the chips fall where they may. Thank you.
Peter Erickson, Plum Island. I wanna thank Mark. We ended up sitting next to each other. And last time he sat down, I said, "You know, Mark, we started out on opposite sides of this issue, and we're in total agreement now." And so, we shook hands on that. And I wanna thank the Board of Selectmen for making this all possible. This exchange of ideas is a wonderful display of democracy. There comes a time to move on, move forward. And so, I wanna make a couple comments about process. As an owner's project manager for forty-five years, I think what, I've found success is to set up a process that covers all the bases and then watch it and tweak it where you need to. So, some thoughts about process. But first, the referendum was not about a plan for a building. It was about hiring design and engineering, right? It was nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The Municipal Building Committee, I attended their meeting this week, has sharpened their pencil, and they could even get that down lower. My experience is that if you authorize a certain amount of money, it will be spent. I think we should work with true numbers. And to the issue of trust that Mr. Currier mentioned, I think people will trust facts. You know, let's get down to the facts. So, back to procedure, before you can hire a designer or engineer, you're required by law to hire an owner's project manager. That's a requirement for public buildings in Massachusetts. Eric mentioned this in passing. Any building over a million five, you have to have an OPM. Now, when I was, before I retired, there were many, many public buildings that I worked on where my firm was hired before the architect on a consulting basis and before the funds were approved. You know, we'd work for an hourly rate, and I think we should bring in a consultant now to help sort through this because there are qualified owner's project managers who are specialized in public safety facilities. They bring in a field of subconsultants who might be ex-police chiefs, fire chiefs, communications experts, and they'll help sort this out through their experience. And they work under the direction of the Municipal Building Committee. And at their, you know, brought in on a competitive basis, there's a selection process. It's dictated by law. What we have, as I understand it from attending the meeting this week, is a feasibility study. It's not a building. It's not a design. Sometimes in this day of computer-aided design, we tend to look at something as if it were a done deal. That's just the way the graphics come out. The flyer went around with a rendering of a building. It's not a done deal. There's a feasibility study. The committee has worked very hard to assemble the entire background of information that is necessary to conduct a design and engineering process. But the architect eventually would be brought on, and it would be their job as a professional to take this information and to sort through it. And to do, the first thing an architect is gonna do, they're not gonna stamp somebody else's design, they're gonna start with program verification. They're gonna go back and ask a lot of questions. If they're asked to come up with an option B, as was suggested, they'll come up with an option B. If they're asked to take a look at non-bricks-and-mortar solutions, they can do that as a professional. When I was, the first job I had out of architecture school, the architect I was working for sat me down and said, "Your job is not to walk by the river and draw drawings. Your job is to organize and communicate." That's the job of an architect, to synthesize, to take a lot of this information. So, we need to get to the point where there's an architect. Before we do that, we can, the town can, I believe, retain an owner's project manager, and I would suggest that that be done. In order to get this vote passed, people need to have facts that they can trust. Now, granted, it would be nice to come to meetings, but there are not, four thousand voters are not gonna come to municipal building committee meetings. Although there is a burden to educate oneself, I would agree that a lot of the information is not readily available. I have tried to find the information. I've relied on the Facebook page. Mark and I have discussed back and forth on some of that, how I was misled by some of that. You know, we can debate that. But ultimately, if the town of Newbury has a website that is one click away from the homepage, and that, and there's a condensed package of information which is vetted by the Municipal Building Committee, immediately, we can educate ourselves and we can trust the results. You know, unfortunately, after Citizens United, no political action committee is responsible for what it says. And I believe that what they're doing a service, and that we can look at what's been put up there. This is not a slight to Boaz and Newbury. But ultimately, it falls at the feet of the Board of Selectmen. And so, there should be readily accessible information about the facts. Once we have the facts, we can move forward. Thank you.
Tony Vincigaro, four Moody Street. I just retired from the federal government. My field was in major weapon system acquisition, right? I dealt with billions and billions of dollars in contracts. I understand the process of getting things done federally. I've always stayed apart from state-local politics because I didn't wanna compromise my federal position. However, I've been a resident of Byfield now for about fifteen years. And we are treated as a separate town, just for what it's worth. However, I'm looking at the entire picture as it relates to Newbury. I agree with one thing. The fire station has to be taken out of this equation. I think that's a big mistake, including that in because it's a volunteer station. It's not owned by the town at this time. All right? But the number-one factor that we have to consider here is that cost is an independent variable, and cost has been a major factor in the defeat of just about everything that's been presented to the voters. We have had, how many two and a half overrides voted down? Why? This is all related. It is all related. So, cost is an independent variable. It's a thing that has to be focused on here. That said, to maintain the independent variable nature, what has to be presented is a segmented breakdown of what we wanna accomplish. You have the needs of the fire department. Separate those. You have the needs of the police station, and you have the needs of the town offices. I don't think there's any question right now. The priority is on. I don't think there's any question right now, the priority is on the police department. Isn't it? Okay. So, we have to find an immediate plan within a reasonable cost that will satisfy the needs of the police department. What does the police department need? I see two police officers here, leadership in the police department that know what they need. All right? So, defining the needs isn't going to be that difficult. I don't believe it will be. But they need the attention first and foremost. Does that mean it's done at any cost? No. We're New Englanders. We want to repurpose things. We want to use what we've got first. That's our nature. So, I've heard a lot of talk, I've followed this intently. You know, I believe that the education was put out there. I understood the issues thoroughly when I voted. Okay? And I didn't have to go through a lot to learn these things. The point I want to make here is, is that the plan has to be very rigid, straightforward. Cost is an independent variable. Priority on what needs to be done first. The police station is that focus. We focus on that first. We solve the police station's issues, we go to the town hall issue next. That is the second issue. The last issue we need to worry about is the fire department because they are independent. And if we don't take that into consideration, if we try to combine that with this, it is doomed for failure. Now, I'm retired now, so I can pretty much get involved if anybody wants me, I will get involved. But what I'm saying here is simple. Okay? The voters of this town understand what they're doing. Okay? The actual turnout of registered voters was pretty substantial. Now, there was a well-organized effort to get this thing passed, but it failed anyway. Why? It's not because of distrust. I got news for you, I don't distrust anybody who volunteers their time or gets elected to public office that wants to do a job on behalf of the citizens of this town, or any town for that matter. Okay? They're to be congratulated and thanked. All right? I believe most of the answers that we need right now, Eric already has. I think he has them. They just need to be segmented into an organized manner that can be presented and digested in pieces, step by step. We do that, we'll get what we need done, and I bet you we get it done at a much more reasonable cost than what was, what we were thinking about. You talk about the fact that we can only spend so much money as approved at town meeting. What happens if you run into an override? What if you run into the fact that you can't meet the requirement with the money that's been allocated? We have to go back in and ask for more money. So, the simple fact is that there isn't necessarily a cap on the money being spent. There's only a cap on the amount of money being spent now. Okay? That's the reality. So, how do we control that? Well, we control that through good design, repurposing. We've got facilities, let's repurpose them. Let's find something that's existing. If we have to buy something, let's buy it. The Apple Engineering Building was a great example. That would have been perfect for the town offices. This is a perfect location for the police station, but this entire building needs to go for that. Not a piece of it. Not raising this up and doing it. I think that's an interim solution, but the police station needs more. And combining them is going to be, combining the town offices and the police station, unless you can find a building that can accommodate it today, that will fail with the voters. I just don't see it passing. You need something, you need something direct and specialized for your purpose only. And so, I mean, I don't want to rant on and on, but I've put a lot of thought into this, and I've watched this, and I'm telling you right now, I really think this is the way forward. This is the way to get it done. And I think the answers are there. All we have to do is extract them, rework them a little bit, and move forward. But the number-one priority has to be the police department. Number one. As long as you do that, we're all set. Thank you.
Now, has everyone that wants to spoken?
Steve Rangston on Plum Island. First of all, I think Tony made a good point about taking the fire department out of the picture. I think that's a critical component to moving forward. But if you're going to take it out of the picture, I suggest that the selectmen need to redo their charge to the Municipal Building Committee. Make clear that you're going to think about renovating this building and doing something about the police station. There's a lot of background that I hear where people want to keep the fire station in play. I think you need to be explicit as selectmen to give the Municipal Building Committee a charge which does not include the fire station. And unless you do that, I think the building committee's going to keep on trying to shuck and jive and build that back into the equation. It's not going to work. I think if you want to get something done, you need to focus on the police station, which everyone, myself included, agrees needs to have something happen to it. I'd be all for looking at renovating town hall as needed as well. But please, get the fire station out of the discussion for future charges. There's been some discussion about debt, about how debt's being retired so the new debt doesn't come along with these projects, it'll only be a small incremental increase. Well, I don't necessarily buy that, those numbers at all. Plus, there's going to be a lot of other stuff coming down the pipe, save from Triton. It's going to be increasing the total debt that we're going to pay. As a Plum Islander, I'm very sensitive to debt since I'm paying for the water and sewer project that went out there, but the rest of the town isn't taking on. But that's debt that I look at every quarter when I get, or every year anyway, when the bills come in. Certainly, I agree that free cash can be a viable vehicle to use for some of the projects that are being considered at town meeting. If you want to do some more designing, maybe it makes sense to use some free cash for design. That money is there already. One other general comment about regionalization, I'm not particularly in favor, but I look at Triton as being a regionalized system, and that has caused some heartache for the town, as I understand it. When it comes to the library, I already know that as far as I'm concerned, we are regionalized. My library card gives me access to the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium already without any cost associated with it. And for that matter, if I want to go to the Boston Public Library, I can get online and access everything in the Boston Public Library. There's a lot of regionalization items that I don't think, well, we already have in effect. And in terms of finding a place to build a station if need be, I'd recommend that among the options that we look at is eminent domain if we need to do it. Say, if there's a good piece of property out there that would work, consider eminent domain as a way to get that piece of property. Maybe, maybe an option to buy a piece, but if there's an ideal piece, eminent domain can be used to obtain the site. And again, that can be a charge to the Municipal Building Committee to entertain that at least. So, they're pretty clear on that. I don't know, pretend to know the town well enough to suggest specific places where you could build a police station. I'll leave that to people far wiser than I. But I'll also note in closing, this goes back to perhaps, you know, the issue of the votes that were taken. When the citizens in the entire town were given the opportunity to vote, they voted no twice. I thought the yes votes were interesting because it was basically 800 votes each time. To me, that says that there are probably 800 people in the town, by and large, that are for the mega project, but they're a minority, and they lost twice. So, please, whatever you do, respect that vote. And one way to respect it is to take the fire department out of the equation, but you need to tell that explicitly to the building committee so that they will not be empowered to look at the fire station at this time. Thank you.
Joe Story, Newbury Necrode. I was a selectman for nine years, and during that period, one of the big goals we had was to pay down our debt service. Okay? We were crippled. 16%, 17% of our debt, of our budget, was going to debt service. You add another 50%, 52% to the school budget, which you have no control over, and we get squeezed, squeezed. We had times that when the police cruisers went out on patrol. They were limited to 45 and then 25 miles per eight-hour shift. Okay? We had nights that there were no police officers on duty. All right? And what we were looking at, the light at the end of the tunnel, was, geez, when we pay down our debt service, then we can restore some of the things that we had to cut to survive. Okay? We cut the lifeguards. All right? That was a big, you know, the nights when that first happened, I don't think there was any selectman that slept during the summer. They were afraid of something happening down there. All right? So, we cut streetlights. Okay? That was brought up. That was, it was going to be an inconvenience that when the town got its act together, we could bring back some of those streetlights. But the streetlights and lifeguards are two examples of what was supposed to happen when we paid down the debt. A lot of that debt, if I'm not mistaken, was debt exclusion. Okay? And that means when people vote to assume that debt, that when it's paid off, then that's going to go away. Okay? It's not like a debt override. Okay? So, people didn't vote for the debt exclusion only to say, oh, geez, here's a good chance to fill in and make up without cutting the taxes on the people. Okay? So, that was a big thing. And again, I talked to a lot of people in town, and after the votes were made, a lot of people said, I'd vote for a police station. Period. Okay? And I think that's, and that's the most pressing need we have, just go down there and look. Okay? So, that's all. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
I would, it's all right. Jan Farah, 72 Old Point Road, Newbury. I have just two things. First, I think that I'm with, most people that I've talked to all say the only thing that they really are passionately about is a new police station. Something has to be done. It's disgraceful. It's an embarrassment to the town. Second, I think that we need to have a vote on things before we have town meeting. We voted at town meeting to appropriate the funds, but then we have to vote literally with paper to approve it. So, it's backwards to me. I think we need to have a vote and then just vote first before it comes up in town meeting because it seems like it was, then we decided at town meeting, now we have to go back and have another vote. So, now, more money is being spent for the same thing, as far as I'm concerned. So, I'm 100% behind police station. Fire station, I think maybe we should get the fire department down here to do it. The fire department in Byfield did, and people, the citizens will be behind. Let's, sure, we can do that. Do a bond raising, get it up, get it moving, get things done. But it's their building, it's their department, it's their livelihoods, or not really, but we're all our livelihoods if everything burns down. But the police station is everybody, and it has to be done, and there's no way around it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like to speak as a private citizen. I'm not a member, I'm not setting the record straight on anything. My name is Erica Coles Jacobson. I live at 15 Scotland Road. We've been homeowners here for 11 years. We have two children in Newbury Elementary School. I give of my time to the town because I am invested in this town. I want to be a proud resident of Newbury. And the one thing that I stress is that when a vote comes up, if we're hearing overwhelming support that we need to do something about the police station, when that comes up, don't just vote no because it's going to be more in your taxes. If you really feel that way, then let's look at it. And if you're looking at a police station, if you think we need to do something about the space downstairs, we need to get the police out into their own facility, please understand that this building, the issues the building has, don't go away because they're not in it anymore. It has to be looked at. It has to be a little bit bigger than just the police because we have to deal with this building. If it's still standing here, we have to renovate it. So, it's going to be a little bit more than the cost to build a police station, it's going to be the cost to build a police station and renovate this at bare minimum. And that is going to mean taking on debt. It doesn't get done. We can't pay for it out of free cash every year. We can't look at our revenues and think it's going to come out. So, it is going to be that hard decision to say, yeah, I'm going to pay a little bit more in my taxes. But I know, and I trust all five of our selectmen. I trust every member of our Municipal Building Committee. I trust the members of the Planning Board and the Finance Committee because I know they're there, not because anyone's getting anything out of it. They're doing it because they want it to be better. And sometimes, better means it's going to have to take a little bit. But we're looking at all different ways to make sure we use free cash to pay down the debt so that the impact on each of us is as minimal as it can be. But we have to respect our public safety officers. And in one last plea, don't think of the fire department as of them. They're in us. They're the ones, but when my field in front of my neighbor's house went on fire this year, they were there. It's not a service I pay for. It's our fire department. There's this weird sense that they get something, they do something, they're ours, and I respect them. And I think we need to, maybe to get this process moving forward, at this point, we got to take them out, but we can't forget about them. We can't think that they're another entity. They are our town fire department. When those sirens went off, did you hope it wasn't your house? I did. And I wanted to know, thank you, that they were going out to take care of whoever needed it.
We have one more person that would like to speak. Frank. Oh, now, we have two. Okay, good. Frank. And then, we're going to cut it off because I want you out there to mediate from us. We do have to talk about the warrants.
Okay. My name is Frank Remley. I live at 16 Old Farm Way. I'm currently chairman of the Finance Committee, and I think this has been a very educational meeting. I've learned a lot. I've taken a lot of notes, and I think there's some ideas here, maybe we can move on. I'd just like to say, I thoroughly agree with what Peter Erickson had to say. And who was the gentleman that followed him? I didn't catch his name. But in any case, maybe the OPM is an answer. I've said all along, we've got to get to the next step. The next step was design, process, and there are a lot of questions that would be answered in that whole process. That's going to be a laborious adventure for us all. And we should have an oversight committee from the town to work with the design group doing this and with the OPM. And in fact, after the last town meeting, I suggested that Peter maybe would be a good candidate for that. So, I think that may be part of the solution. I agree wholeheartedly with the police station argument. I've said that all along, we don't want to lose the police station in this process. And I continue to agree with that. So, you know, I don't know what more to say. I'm troubled by the fact that there's no trust in your town leaders. This group of selectmen is maybe the best I've seen, and I've been here for 20 years now. And they've been very open and very amenable to anything, and they've been very, they've contributed a lot to the whole process. And I think the problem is that we're all part of the town, we're equal to you, and maybe that's the problem. I spent 40 years as a consultant, and there was an old adage that you hire a consultant, you loan them your watch to tell you what time it is. And that may be true here. And maybe the OPM is the answer. If it's a $25,000 consultant from Andover, maybe that would help. I don't know. You all have to tell us, but you're apparently not really listening. And part of it's the lack of turnout at any of the meetings that Erica has run and Eric have participated in. Eric's my neighbor, by the way. And they've all worked tremendously hard to move this thing forward. And what I'm hearing today is a bit of a disappointment. In fact, I'm a little bit offended by the lack of trust argument and the letters that were written in the newspaper to that extent. We have no other motive in mind, is to do the right thing for the town. None other. And the Finance Committee has done its best to make this work, and it will work. And in fact, I've said before that Chuck Constro, when he left as town administrator, left an exit report, and he said that 2017 would be a good time to start refurbishing facilities because our debt's going to be down. And Joe Story and his board have done a good job at getting, accommodating that. Our debt service is way down. We're down to about 50% now, and by the year 2020, it's all going to be paid off. You know, so the cost of anything we do in the future is going to be marginal compared to that. So, we've done what I think our job is. We can't really go much further with this. The other question I would have is communications. There have been questions in the part of the committee, in fact, Gene Case, who's contributed heavily to this whole process, he did the analysis of the impact on debt, has wondered, how can we communicate better as a town to all residents so we don't come to this kind of thing every time? And I've been through this before. I don't want to get through it again. You know, but I understand this is a big step, and it's a big decision for a lot of you. $51... $51 may not be much to me, but it may be a lot to a lot of people in town. God knows, our, but I will say, the good news is that our school assessment has gone way down this year, and that's partly because of a drop in enrollment by 40 students. And that makes a big impact, both on Chapter 70 allocations, as well as our own internal allocations for the over minimum contribution for the town. And there's been a change in the formula in the way Chapter 70 funds are allocated now, which has been to our benefit, because we were paying above the maximum we were supposed to be paying in the past. The legislature didn't care about that, suddenly they care about it. But, so our costs this year have gone down about $260,000. You know, and you probably read in the paper this morning that there's been a consensus now on the stadium improvement, and it'll be even less expensive than the current assessment is. That's a good step forward, in my opinion, and we can afford it. We can afford it five times over with the savings we have just with this year. So things are moving in the right direction, but we got to get this problem solved. I was afraid all along that if we shoot too high, we're going to lose the police station. We can't do that. I would remind you that the vote last, two weeks ago, was for the design process.
Excuse me. You know, I keep, I keep hearing that word being brought up, about the design process. In the background, it's 11.9 million. So I ask you a question. If I came to you and asked you, I'm going to build you a-
John, stand up and talk about-
If I came to you and asked you, I'm going to build you a house for 11.9 million, that I don't want to begin with, right? But would you go ahead and give me $100,000 to design it? That's what has come up, that the end result is no, we know what we're getting, what we're designing for. Mostly the people saying, we don't want all that.
My point is, the design process would get into all of those questions, you know, plus location, plus scope, and size, and amenities. There's not going to be any marble or gold plating or anything like that. We're talking bare bones. You know, and I would agree that right now, this would be, in my opinion, a boon to everyone's home values. You know, you talk about Plum Island, and you're already paying more, well, you would have been out of business if it weren't for the town, standing up, the town is-
The town goes all the way with the tax base.
All right, let's go.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, I'm sorry.
All right, thanks. Now, I think, I would like to thank everyone immensely for coming. I know you folks want to hear a little from us. Unless my board wants to jump in front of me, I'll start. You want to start? Go ahead.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Has, something different that we haven't heard?
I'd like to speak.
Anybody in this roster? Okay.
All right. Would anyone from my board like to lead this off? All right. I'm going to lead it off in the form of a muse, because I listened to the vote, I did respect the vote, I still had closely held feelings on what I thought was necessary, because when I first looked at the whole project, it was way too big for me, you've heard that before. But then I started to look at the fact that town hall was certainly inadequate, the police station by far rose to the top, but we were also short on space. There was no real place to go sideways. So wouldn't you know it, the fire department had certain defects that absolutely needed to be addressed, one of them sewer, and you couldn't run sewer to a privately held commercial concept if we were going to put sewer in here, a new rebuild. So pocketed space, and the fact of maybe hooking up, I mean, Bob actually spoke to it, Ed Hammer had a good idea, maybe we can put a police station in there. So sewer to me, as I started to embrace this whole concept, and add water, sewer and water, started to make this especially valuable, especially if we had a lot more room, which summed up the fire station. So taking the fire station out, if that has merit to get something through, it's certainly something that we will be in favor of looking at. To close, what I'm going to say, I already had decided, I listened to the vote, I have certainly listened to everyone here, and I'm not ready to move anything, at least myself, onto this warrant at this time. Now, I don't mean that to preclude anything from the rest of my board, but I can tell you one thing, that we've got to keep the momentum up, like Peter Erickson and Eric and everyone has said, even Fred said this, we need to continue to push forward to solve our problems. I myself will give this to you. The police station is incredibly important. I think if we don't take care of town hall somehow in the process, it's not a good deal. But that's just me. All right, anyone else?
I mirror everything you've said. You've said it all, said it well. Thank you.
I naturally disagree, because that's my job. We have a timeframe under which we are currently operating. The police, if we do not continue to move this project forward, will have to be out of their trailers in nine months. That would be true for the board of health, the building inspector. I believe that hiring an OPM, getting the project designed, designing a project means we can look at all of the options. We've never precluded anything. People have talked about Morton buildings over and over and over again. We've never said we won't do a Morton building. In looking at what other towns have done, and has been done in the past, it seems unlikely that every other town in Massachusetts has built at $400 a square foot when there was a $100 square foot option. But if it's there, my God, we will use it. We don't want to spend any more money than we have to, but not doing anything now is going to cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so, if I can convince the board, we may spend money to hire consultants, start the OPM process, relook at the feasibility of the projects, and get some plans that have numbers and facts and real figures before the town. Because I think it is irresponsible to say, the town said no, let's just not do anything. Because not doing anything means the police station has to stay where it is, until they get kicked out by law, and then we're spending more money. It is not a fiscally responsible choice. So, from my opinion, while I've heard, I've been taking notes, and I want to address everything everyone has said, we still need to keep moving forward. We can't just stop here and let them stew in a sewer-filled basement. It's not an option for me.
Next.
I guess I'm just going to tell you where my head's at on this project.
You don't know?
This is a board of selectmen meeting, Paul.
I've known since he was born.
Yeah. Do I believe that the municipal building committee found the best solution for 50 years? Yes. Do I think that we can pass that project as it is? I don't think we can. That's, I think it's by far the best long-term solution, but if you can't pass it, what good is it? I've seen firsthand the deficiencies at the fire department, we cannot forget about that. But I caution strongly against a three-stage project, that is the last thing we want to do. Where my head's at right now, and I might be right, I might be wrong, I'm thinking a combined town hall and police on this site. I love this old range hall. I'm so glad in my time I get to serve in this building. I love it. It's completely inadequate. Raising the roof, jacking the building up, you get into fixing something old, a lot of times you end up spending just as much as when you went new. Because you open up an old building like this, if you can only imagine. So my thoughts, we have a sewer connection here, we own the site, raise this building, level it out, and we need to address our police and town hall issues. We need to take down at least two birds with one stone. Three would be optimal. Second is not optimal, but if nobody's comfortable with the full scope of the project as it's proposed right now. I heard two no votes, that tells me we need to hone this thing somehow. I'm not willing to concede all the good parts of the project that the municipal building committee is recommending, but we need to find a balance between comfort and being smart. We still can't lose that long-term vision down the road. I don't want to live in a town where I can't afford the taxes in 20 years, because I plan on still being here. But it's, we just have to find that comfort level with everyone, if everything, if, we just have to think as one town. Our board's been torn about this, the municipal building committee's been torn about it. I mean, we all hear everybody's concerns, and the outcomes of the votes matter to me. I listen to that. But I strongly caution against building just a police station. We can save a lot of money by combining at least two parts of this project together, and doing it now. We have the sewer here now, we own the site now, and once we get all the, if we get all these trailers out of here, raise this building, the septic system's gone, we don't need it anymore, level the site, there's a lot of room to work with here. The site's worked for many years, I think it could work for many more. I mean, I understand the sounds of Route 1, but how long's it take to get to Route 1 from here? A minute? We're not that far from Route 1, and a lot of things we need are right here, so. And if, we could see a second option, you know, like Bob said, maybe something in the seven to eight million dollar range, but we don't want to forget all the aspects of this project. We still need to, if we have that second option, we can weigh them side by side easily. We still can't forget that the project is proposed, I feel is the best long-term solution. But maybe we can find something in the middle. What I'm thinking is a police town hall that's designed to add on to in the future. The HVAC systems are up to it, the electrical service is up to it, it's designed to plug something on to if and when the need arises, and we all know it's going to. So if we can think in, in terms of a facility here that's designed and ready to add on to when the time comes, I think that would probably be worth looking at. And I, you know, I, I don't want to create more work, we've put, everybody's put so many hours into this, but, you know, we need to find a comfort zone, I want the voters to trust us. I didn't get into this for people to not trust me or the board I belong to. I respect all these people. Everyone's totally open-minded, we share ideas, it's really a team of problem solvers that I'm proud to belong to. That's it.
Thank you.
I also believe that the municipal building committee has, has answered the question-
It's not picking you up at all. Sorry.
I also believe that the municipal building committee has found the most fiscally responsible, cost-effective solution for the needs of the police, the fire, and the town hall over the next 50, 50 years. I do believe that. But I also believe that that may not be the right solution for the town of Newbury. So I did listen to the vote, I heard you, I'm committed to solving the problems of the police department, I'm committed to solving the needs of town hall, and I'm also committed to solving the needs of our fire companies. I've heard it over and over again, they're not part of the town, they are part of the town. We have the Town of Newbury Fire. They, we, they exist to support us, and we in turn support them. They have two separate, the two separate sites belong to the independent fire companies, which are 501(c)(3)'s, and they do, they, the closest thing that I can equate it with is it's very similar to the Triton Ed Foundation. These benevolent fire companies can raise money by themselves in support of each firehouse outside of what the town provides. They have call firefighters, these men, I'm thankful for them every single day, I echo what Erica said, because I think in the same thing, is that fire company going to my house? Okay? I'm glad that they're both, they're all there, but they're paid when they show up. We have to take care of them. There's going to be needs. Thank God Byfield was able to erect what they were able to erect, they did it because they were not a municipal, they did it as a 501(c)(3). If they were part of a, of the Town of Newbury again, like they are now, they would have to pay prevailing wage, they would have to pay all that other stuff. So as far as, in my, in my head, I have the Town of Newbury Police, and I have the Town of Newbury Fire. The fire company's needs at this moment are not as pressing as the police. So as long as we don't forget our fire companies, I'm fine with this, but we, something has to be, whether it's through the capital planning committee, something has to be addressed, laid on paper to address the needs of the fire companies as well. That's just the way, what I'm thinking now.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
And this is no offense to you-
Got to go this way.
It's, it's no offense to Nate, if the fire company is separate, why, who's paying Nate's salary? Is the Town of Newbury paying Nate's salary?
Yes.
But, but they're separate.
All the firefighters get paid by the Town. Byfield as well. The fire department exists, the fire department's paid $85,000 a year from the town to give to the private company to pay the bills. The town supports every aspect of the fire department, and at one point, they stood more alone through fundraising, through an ambulance service, but it's all become fully municipal in the town, because you can no longer have a private company running an ambulance service with town employees. The whole game's changed. These fire companies will no longer stand alone much longer as even independent private fire companies. Newbury's at the point where they can't afford the, with the, just the $80,000 the town gives them to function, you know, at that level, between debt, paying for the bills of a leaky building that has bad heating, and, so it's kind of at that point where Byfield will be stable for a longer period of time because of what they've been able to do in that period of time before we, we came to where we are now, but Newbury was not, they're still not all the functionality. So at this point, when, when we got back in the game, we were like, we're going to have these needs, they're going to be yours. And what, more and more, what we're trying to do is basically say, at this point, these two companies were founded at one point to give this over to the town. So we're not selling it, there's debt that still exists for running the fire department, that debt is basically going to get pushed to the town, and that was the, the purchase price that everybody talked about. It's like, here, you take the debt, it's yours, and we're just going to function for you, because we're only, both fire companies were only here to provide that function. If they were, if they were thoughtful for any more else, then that it was wrong, then it was always wrong. They were only here for one reason, to provide a service for the town.
I just don't understand why we just started paying you a salary. What, what changed?
Five years ago, can I, can I just say, five years ago at town meeting, you changed it. It was changed at town, at town meeting to have a municipal, a municipal fire company. So we are the Town of Newbury Fire.
When did that happen?
About five years ago.
So then you proposed to give the chief a salary then, too?
It was $3,400 last year, wasn't it?
Because my husband's been in the fire department 45 years, I've done a lot of things with the fire department, I've heard a lot of differentitions with the fire department, I never heard that.
Well, I think Nathan-
The fire department progressed from where it was to where it is.
In a short, it's only been since February.
In a very short period of time.
Is it important to have this on film? I just don't want to be remissing my duties.
Well, I mean, I think that-
People will know.
Well, I just need to have it first on film, that's all.
I think there was a little confusion, I think there was a little confusion, that the town appointed a fire chief.
Yeah.
Well, it was the board of fire-
Board of fire engineers do the fire chief. The selectmen do not hire a fire chief. The board of fire engineers hire a fire chief. There were several firemen that came to every call that live in town, that if they were known that they were going to get this amount of money, probably would have taken on the position themselves.
I don't think so, they would have been paid cut for those guys.
I know so.
They would have been paid cut for those guys.
Listen, yes, they would.
Or, um, yeah, go ahead, tell them.
We're not going to get this done.
No, we're not going to get this done. I just want it to be known that Byfield and Newbury are privately owned fire departments. We have fire precinct number one and precinct number two. That's the way- That's the way it has been since I've been around here. I have not known that, I did not know that the town of Newbury took over precinct number one.
They signed a lease. That controls all the equipment and the function of the building.
Of Newbury.
Of Newbury and Byfield.
Why, why did we not know this?
You should know that. Talk to Doug and those guys down there. They're fully aware of it. The company signed it.
All right, and do me a favor.
The company signed it without the town knowing it. The company.
Sure, they did it together with the town.
Sharon, another time, another place.
Okay.
But we're gonna leave this for the fact that, so no one has misconceptions that the Board of Fire Engineers elected the chief.
Yeah.
I didn't do it. Nathan's my son. I didn't do it. No one else on this board did.
Yeah, but that makes me laugh.
So, the Board of Fire Engineers, I think some like me, maybe all do, I don't know. But I didn't take it, do it. Just so everyone knows, the town didn't do it, the Board of Fire Engineers.
Can I ask a question about the warrant?
Yeah.
Dale Williams, 12 Scotland Heights Drive. Just a question about the upcoming town meeting and the warrant. Now, we've heard a lot about this OPM today and the possibility of getting that going. Question one, are there any other major issues on the warrant for the town meeting coming up near the end of the month? Or could this be a very important warrant, if you guys have the time to put it together, to put this OPM, that we can have that discussion at town meeting? And it may take not as much time as it's taken this morning, but to keep this ball rolling. Because nobody in this room wants to see this stop. Because we need the police station. So, are there any other major warrants planned for the town? Could you guys have the time to put together a OPM-type warrant to keep this ball rolling so that we don't spend the whole winter waiting for the next spring town meeting? And the police station just deteriorates even more and bad things happen?
Well said. Listen, we do have a warrant to go over. We could, while everyone's still here, we have, we have the warrant in front of us, right? I don't mind. Do we have something on the warrant for number 12, deciding what to do?
Yeah, we could definitely modify that to, to be exactly what Dale said.
Now, let's take a quick poll. Does anyone have problems with this Board of Selectment entering in and it's probably gonna be free cash or, or quick stabilization fund? Does, by show of hands, does anyone have, how many people would vote for us to hire or go into the process of hiring an OPM to look at the project in relationship to some of the places that we've discussed? Maybe police-fire here, maybe, maybe a free, how many people would?
You do it not exceed number?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. So, but asking me right now what that is, I don't know yet.
Yeah, exactly.
Are they gonna be looking at all aspects of the project?
Isn't this one of the dots?
Not high enough?
Not high enough.
All right. So...
I think a consultant's a good idea.
Go ahead.
This is Steve Anger again. The abstract in OPM sounds okay. But again, if it's gonna be for three items, as opposed to a police station and renovation, the town hall, I have a problem with it. And I think a lot of people here do as well, have a problem about trying to keep the fire department going as part of the big picture at this time. You can come back in six months or three months and look at the fire department. But for now, the immediate need is to worry about the police station and I think as well, the town hall. I'd like to remind you that, you know, Sam has some edicts he has to issue about what's going on with the trailers out there. We need to keep the police station in front of us as job one, to show movement on that. In which case, the state may continue to give us a waiver. But if we get bogged down, and I think we will get bogged down with other discussions about the fire department, things are gonna slow down. Sam's, Sam's gonna have to pull his trigger about condemning the trailers and other things that fall out of that. So I would say, keep your eye on the ball. The police station, the police station, the police station.
I fall myself, and the board can speak to this, so that I have a stipulative definition, so you understand it. In this project that we're looking at, when we talk about the fire station, what we are actually talking about, at least for myself, and I think JR spoke to it, is the fact that if we have sewer here, when we have sewer maybe for a town hall and maybe a police station, we have to think of some way to be able to put sewer to the back fire station. Because they have a drastic need for it. And I think within that OPM or whatever we do, we should be able to explore how the hell we're gonna get sewer. Because I got news for you, and I saw Peter shaking his head. If we don't, they'll close the building. Now, do I make myself clear? That's what we're talking about. All right. So, go ahead, Rich.
Rich Capelupo again. So we've already spent roughly $400,000 to get sewer to the front of this building, right, or the rear of it?
Yeah.
A little less, actually. A little less. So, how do we bring it to the last five feet tight? Is that already planned, or is that not gonna happen?
Yeah. I'd like to speak to that if I may, and Chuck, if you have those.
No, no, me, okay?
The sewer is being brought down. It was put through the bid process. It was put on the town floor. Everybody knew what was going on. I pushed very, very hard and lobbied for that, because I had a pretty rough feeling this was not gonna go. We need that sewer down here desperately. Yes, it's going to help, it's going to improve conditions. It is not gonna make it a hundred percent perfect police station. Hooking into the town hall and into the police station with the sewer is a municipal thing that was approved by the sewer board in Newbury Port. To hook it to a private building, they, the private people, have to petition the sewer board in Newbury Port for a hardship. That's how the process is done. We, the people, we, the Board of Selectment, the town of Newbury cannot give it to them. Only the sewer board in Newbury Port can allow that to happen under a hardship. And yes, they do have a hardship. I hope that clears it.
So, my question was, is that pipe that's probably right over there somewhere scheduled to be attached to this building?
Yep.
Yep.
So, this building sewer problems are soon over.
We certainly hope so.
So, so the next immediate need that we have to mitigate an extremely urgent health hazard in the police department would be to try to stop the infiltration of water, which in my vast construction experience believes that that can be done fairly simply. And then a mold remediation needs to be done. And that's not a million-dollar deal. And if we do those four things, we won't spend a lot of money, but it will kind of buy us some time. Because I believe that part of what I'm being told is that we're under some sort of a deadline. Things are coming together and we're probably... So, while all that's going on, I think that we could undertake the relatively simple task of convincing Newbury Port to attach the fire station to the pipe that's 50 feet away. And then that problem partially goes away.
If Newbury Port...
Again, and the town, the town can't, the town can't petition it.
I understand. I don't want to hear the scare tactics about, I, I'm sure that we can tie into that pipe. So whatever process it is, we've spent the money. Let's just go through the process and, and try to convince them that we have a disaster going on. And I'm sure reasonable minds will prevail, and they'll let us tie in.
But wait a minute, who's gonna take that?
Who's gonna take what?
Tie them in.
Um, I'm very confident it's not a lot of money, relatively speaking. And if we get rid of some, it will allow us to get rid of some trailers, some trailers, and it will...
So, you think the town's gonna be able to do that?
I think the Public Works Department could come here and tie that in in less than a day.
I don't think that, I don't think we can legally do that, because it's an independent...
There's always a reason why we can't do stuff when it, and, and that, my life is built around doing every single thing that somebody said I can't do, so.
Thank you, Rich.
All, all these things that Richie said have actually been somewhat bettered. The question was, why didn't the fire department go out and do it first? I heard that is because we had this other voting process. So I hope that answers your question. So, but that doesn't mean that anything that's been said right now isn't something that's gonna enter into what we're going to try to forecast out to do. I'm beginning to think, and I forget who said it on our board, that it's gonna be way over our head and maybe something like an OPM, an engineering consultant certainly. I mean, Eric has done just yeolmans, but maybe, maybe... Bob, did you want to speak?
So you can ask for a vote, right?
Yeah.
Let Bob speak, and then I will, because he's one of them.
Bob Collins, Annapolis Way. Just a question, Nate, you mentioned that the fire company now has a lease with the town, a lease. So it would seem, doesn't that kind of change, it's now the municipal leased building? And I would think that it's an opportunity to go back to Newbury Port and say, you know, you have the excuse, the exclusive lease of the building? I think that's maybe an opportunity to do that. And then certainly, whatever the tie-in fee. You know, our fire companies have done a wonderful job. They've saved us millions of dollars. Chief Pearson did this pro bono for, for years, saving us just hundreds of thousands of dollars. And certainly, we should never forget all of the volunteers. When you go to the Newbury Port site and you're spending $2 million for just payroll, and Newbury does it all, equipment, lease, manpower for $500,000, you gotta look at that, we're saving a million dollars a year because of the hard work of these individuals and families. But I, I would think that being able to do this, get the sewer tied in outback, we have another opportunity to really look at this again, to at least get that tied in where it is now a leased municipal building. Thank you. But I, I think the selectmen here, I've been on boards for the last seven or eight years, capital planning, finance committee, site selection committee, land surplus committee. And I have never seen a more open, hard-working, and accessible Board of Selectmen than this group right here. They're here truly to do the right thing. Eric and his committee, you know, there's talk about an OPM. It's a great idea when you start building and you're managing a project. There's no OPM you can hire that's any more capable or any smarter than that guy sitting there right now. And so, we gotta get, we gotta get off the mark. What do we want to do? Is it a police, is it a police town hall? Would everyone raise their hands? Does everyone agree that we should be doing some sort of a combined facility, a police town hall on this side? Yeah, I mean, that, I, I look at this, if we don't get a majority, a supermajority, a two-thirds support for whatever we're doing, we're, we're really losing. This isn't win by a vote. It's we want, we want the overwhelming consensus from a supermajority of our residents. That's the way we succeed as the town of Newbury. And that's where we are. We're not Byfield, we're not Old Town, we're not Plum Island. Just the town of Newbury. And, and I think we should all thank all our firemen every day for what they do and the millions of dollars they've saved this town. Because I don't know how we would ever be able to repay, we're paying full rate for our fire companies.
Okay. One word I wanna say right now is I'm not against putting the sewer to the fire station. I just wanna make sure we get everything perfectly aligned, legally right. That's all I was saying.
So, looking at the amount of hands that went up, and everyone was looking forward, so it was only people in the back that could really see that there were a lot of hands. Now, do I take that as consensus, or do I take that as an opinion of this room as we move forward as selectmen to try to craft something to go on the warrant for this town meeting?
No.
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 Then, this room thinks that we should put it off to the spring just to put it off and not have the discussion at town meeting?
Yes, I'd be willing to...
Johnny, get up a little sec.
I think we should, I think we should wait till the spring. I'd need some time to come up with some hard numbers for my idea. There was another, your suggestion about leveling the building and just go modular prefab. That goes up rather quickly. It's all designed...
I just wanna say, the only two types of construction I'm opposed to are wood exterior and plastic exterior. Both weather way too fast. Plastic weathers longer than wood. But I would not be opposed to a metal-sided building. I think metal and masonian.
Okay, that can be going up in figures. I think figures should help.
Yeah.
Okay? But I would be supportive of doing some work on it here after the selectmen. I don't mind going on the building committee, but I guess, I guess you have to be appointed. And I don't know if they really want me there. But I think the springtime, give us some time to put something together, a plan B.
Joe, go ahead. You're talking about, Joe Story again, the warrant. You're talking about going back to town meeting. You've already passed it at town meeting. It's the ballot box. Going to town meeting is not gonna improve the situation, right? Okay, so, something to think about. Going back to town meeting, you've already had the positive vote at town meeting.
There might be, there might be more people at town meetings.
What?
There might be more people at town meetings, so we don't know how unfair.
Well, take it, you, you might get that locked out too, you know?
Can you legally use that money that you passed at town meeting, or do you have to? Wasn't it tied to the ballot box?
Question for someone other than me. Tracy, I don't know if you can, is she going?
My understanding of the legality of that situation is that we passed at town meeting and not to exceed for a debt override. If we went to town meeting this time, we could ask for another debt override. Or because of the skill and hard work of our town, we actually have more free cash now, close to $2 million. So we could put a warrant forward that was to spend from free cash, which is decided at town meeting.
To Joe Story's point, you, you have to go back to town meeting to do anything.
Yes. Kind of like in your face, just saying.
Eric, Eric, question. If, where's, if I look out on the group and they need more, and I listen to what Peter said and who else was the gentleman that used to work for, that are dealing in large contracts, and we're talking about getting more precise information that you folks can look at on something that we've taken from today's conversation, and we think it might be a good idea, I'm just gonna say, let's say a police station and town hall. How do we hire that design plan? Can, is there a way to use free cash to hire that? There won't be $600,000?
Yes. So...
Wow.
So, under the law 30B, under state law, I think it's...
Yeah, sorry.
There's procurement of goods and services. And they have thresholds of under $10,000. You have to do it this way in a good business manner. If it's between $10,000 and $29,999,000, then there's a procedure. If it's over $30,000, there's another procedure. So, getting back to the scope, I mean, when architects put together a scope, it works one of two ways. Hire me, I'm $100 an hour, and we'll just start the process, and you'll pay me as we go through the process. If you...
Sign build.
Nope, just, just contract for a fee. If architects have projects, and that project has a $10 million construction cost, most architects in the industry have a percentage related to the amount of construction, and they can figure out the effort based on the typical $10 million building, $2 million building, $100 million building. Obviously, the, and the state has guidelines too. On the DECAN, Department of Capital Asset Management, has pages where they describe a project type, the level of complexity. If you're going to build a municipal hospital, it's a higher level of complexity. If you're gonna build a maintenance ship. If you're going to build a maintenance shift. And then the size of the project, depending on the square footage and the construction cost, whether it's a million, whether it's $5 million or $10 million, then there's a range of percentages of fees that give you guidance of what that's supposed to cost. Now, if you're going to hire somebody to do some work, and you tell them that you want them to do, I don't know, everything.
Oh, does that include geothermal?
There's risk, there's risk and reward. So, if you want them to do everything, the risk to sign up on a contract is, okay, I'm going to have to get X because I don't know where this is going. If you tell them, I want you to focus on an assessment of town hall, which has an assessment of town hall office needs, police station needs, and an assessment of a building over there, and then I want you to take that assessment and say, okay, here's what you have, here's what you're missing, here's the lifespan of this building, here's the lifespan of that building, let's organize those as costs. Then let's assess if in terms of what was proposed, is that's what we really need. Then, then we can get to, okay, here's the site, here's how, well, then we could do that much with a, with an OPM. And the OPM could lay out a schedule, the OPM could lay out how you would go about hiring an architect through the state required laws, what those percentages might be, and assess values, and put together a budget similar to what I have, probably with much better numbers, of exactly what the bottom line cost is. It would also be helpful in organizing in a clearer means and manner. Here's option A, here's option B, here's the maintenance costs, here's the lifetime building costs, and so it's, what are we asking somebody to do? The municipal building committee is doing, you know, the volunteers has been doing the legwork for everybody. We can certainly hire somebody, it's going to cost money. But what do we want them to do? You have to know what you want somebody to do.
I was going to say, Eric, minus the money, isn't that exactly what you did? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
It is, and it, you know, I did it, I'm proud of it, but that certainly doesn't mean that it's all there. It doesn't, you know, a professional that's doing this during the day that has a little bit more access to focus on exactly this issue, that has done recent police stations and town halls and municipal buildings, certainly would get better information. They would have more time to put it in a better means. And if there's a sense of distrust, there would be a third party that's going to stand up to you and say, I've just done this in this town, this town, and that town. I did it like this, I did it like that, I did it like this. These are the reasons why those projects came out that way. And then people would have something more based their decisions.
Pardon me for interrupting you again, Bob. I have a very hard time putting something on a warrant that spends $25,000 or $30,000, okay? When we have people breaking ball joints and tie rod ends and palm holes out there. They're saying, what are you doing, Chuck? So, that's my take on it. I'm sorry, but, you know, I mean, I think you did a wonderful job, Bob. I think we need to task you to focus on what the folks here have said tonight. And I think you can do a great job, that is just my opinion.
And hiring somebody would make the process move faster. There's only so much time the committee has to put this information together.
Peter, come up. You know, and Peter, reaffirm about, right, you were one of the people that gets those questions, right?
Very carefully.
A lot of those questions, I think when you met Eric and saw the depth of scope.
Yeah, go right to the problem.
A lot of them were answered, right?
Correct, absolutely. I think they've done a great job.
And I think Eric has given us a direction of like.
Yeah, I agree entirely with what Eric just said, as a process going forward. Just to clear one thing up, retaining an owner's project manager that has a specific definition, specific scope of services, there's a specific qualification-based selection process in place. This is required by law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for all projects in excess of $1,005,000. And there are reasons for that, you may agree with or disagree. But it is required to have this entity in place before hiring an architect. So that's why, I think you were suggesting that this would be a good next step, as a third party to come in, look at the feasibility study, kick the tires, listen to all of these things that have been said, and organize and communicate a proposal going forward. That may have phases, it may have alternatives, but it would also be the entity that develops the request for proposals for architect selection. And this is a lot of work. This is a lot of work. And it's got to be done during the day, when other, you know, consultants are in their offices. It's a tremendously demanding job, but I think that for $20,000 or $25,000, the project could be brought to the point where an architect could be, the funds for an architect would probably be approved. And I just want to clarify one thing, the issue of trust, it's not about trusting people. It's just about trusting the numbers. That's the issue of trust that I've been talking about. It's not about mistrust of any individual. It's about trusting a process and trusting the numbers. And I think we're almost at that point. Well, we, if we bring in a third party, owner's project manager, and by the way, I've done this for 45 years, I am not in the running, I would not accept any job if offered to me, so forget about that, I have no axe to grind. It's a good next step that I believe can be done without approving large amounts of money. It can probably be done, I don't know how the feasibility study was commissioned, or what funds that was out of, but they were, these people came in as consultants, they developed a tremendous amount of information. There's this great library backlog of numbers and so on that were available, made available to me by Eric and by Martha Taylor this week when I came looking for them. Eric invited me to come to the MBC meeting. I've learned an awful lot. And my thinking on this has matured somewhat. But we've got to get going, you know? Time only ratchets in one direction, okay? Just want to leave with this thought. Time only ratchets in one direction, all right? There is always enough time to do this stuff right. And there is never enough time if you get it wrong.
So, question to Eric and share with the municipal building committee, and you're standing there, Peter. Would I be safe, from your perspective and from the people in this room's perspective, if this group entered into, for this town meeting, the ability to put an up to figure for $40,000 to review the police and town hall in the structure that Eric has mentioned and also Peter said? Is there any angst in the audience about something like that?
Are you saying about the position of town hall, he's only going to look into this town hall?
Well, listening, yes, listening to what was said by Eric and Peter, you've got to give these guys a little focus, or you're not going to get anything back. And that's getting rid of one site. If that guy comes in and says, this is great, you're thinking it might be good, or he comes in and says you're thinking it's bad, at least we're going to know what I think it is. Bob?
Jeff, I would suggest that you would consider just increasing the, increasing the professional services fee by X amount of dollars, by adding that, basically a midterm budget adjustment, increasing that by, whether it's $25,000, $30,000, or $40,000, and then that would be the pot that you would secure the professional services of an OPM. If you didn't spend the whole 40, it just reverts back to free cash.
Say that in English, because I can learn.
I would simply suggest we increase the professional services budget.
And we have in place.
That we have in place by 40K, if that's the number, and do that. But I think, to Steve Manchin's point, I think you guys need to have a consensus tonight of what's the next direction. Is it to drop the fire department as the third component of this at this time and focus on a town hall? Because if you don't have the direction, if you don't give us that direction, we'll continue to wander.
Well, that's right, that's why earlier you said, town hall, please.
So, consider putting 40K in your professional services account, and then that could be allocated as deemed necessary. Consider reaching a consensus with yourselves, and then offer that direction to your municipal building committee that, here is your charge at this time.
We'll go, we'll go following your saying that if protection two petitions with how the city of Newburyport is a private entity to be hooked up, the sewer gets turned down, that somewhere along the line we're going to have to.
I would still think and suggest that that is now a municipal leased building, and that we could go to the city of Newburyport, it's a critical facility, municipality lease, and the connection can be contingent upon the lease. So as long as it's leased by the municipality, the sewer can be tied up.
All right.
So, I guess what I said is, the building should be assessed, the information should be there, and then the focus can still be on the town hall and the police station. We shouldn't just turn a blind eye and just say no, doing it. If we get the people in place, it's short money and going out and hiring somebody else. So, just do the assessment, and then if you guys decide, you can say the police and town hall. But let's not just not do something.
Did I see a question here, and we have to answer the one? You want to say something? No, Jason?
Yes.
Well, I agree with what you have to say. I think that is up to the city of Newburyport to take that on, to get their yes and to get their no. It's also a matter of our town council putting that on it, because we take advice from them. I'm more than willing to do that. I really believe that we should re-task municipal building committee, and have them go together, okay, these are all the facts they have, then they will come to us and say, we need to hire this consultant to do this. So try and jam it in on tonight's vote? I'm sorry, I'm against that.
I think it's just what you should consider, but I think we should listen. There was, there's not a majority of support for free, free-pronged municipal.
I agree.
That's loud and clear.
Yes.
What you heard here tonight is, a good two-thirds of the hands that were raised in this room should give some indication that there seems to be a supermajority of the group present, who I think cover all points of the vote, whether they were yes votes or no votes. And I think that's what you should follow up on. And tying in the sewer can be a third component, but you're not getting into complete restoration or rehabilitation of that building at this length.
Thank you, we're going to, we're going to move to the one now, we're going to take and move our table back, you're welcome to stay, we're going to take our chairs.
Thank you, Bob.
The more input, the better the product will be in the end.
Anyone else?
Definitely, I think probably 60% of the audience out there was a no vote, and I'm really impressed that they came to, and ultimately convinced a few of them to do what they want. I think it was great.
Anyone else? All right, let's move into the warrant. Tracy, are you going to lead the one, or do you want me to read the act?
No, I'll lead you through it.
Good, thank you.
We'll just go through quickly. Basically, the first article that's going to be appearing on the warrant is taking action on any board and committee report. The second article will be, is requesting $10,000 to establish a storm water management account. John O'Connell came before the board and gave you an update. By doing it in an article, that will allow the money to stay in the account even if they don't use the full top $10,000 in the first year, rather than having it in a line item that closes out every year.
Yes, I said we used to do five every year.
Right.
Okay, all right.
The third article is requesting $14,000 for a school resource officer. This isn't new money, just to be clear. We already have the resource officer, but the district, the Trident District School Committee did support paying a portion of the cost for this position. They've given us a check for it. We need a mechanism to get that money back into the police department account. So that's what this article is actually doing. Article four for $25,000, that is being requested to go into, under the police department salary and wage account. Throughout the season, I've had numerous complaints about parking as well as trash on Plum Island. What I'd like to do in requesting this, this would allow me to hire seasonal, part-time employees to basically enforce both our parking bylaws and our trash bylaws on the island. So that's what that article number four is for. Article five is requesting $10,000 being added to the fire department maintenance expense account. You heard earlier today the discussion of executing lease agreements between our two fire companies. As part of that negotiation, the town agreed to pay some $10,000 worth of the maintenance expenses on the vehicles. Right now, what we have is we have the town of Newbury Municipal Fire Department, which was voted at town meeting through special legislation that was passed by the state, an act, a special act of the legislature. So we have a town of Newbury Municipal Fire Department. Our relationship with the fire company has evolved over the years, so that now they are the property owners of both the buildings and the equipment, and the town has entered into a lease agreement to lease the buildings, to lease the equipment. And this $10,000 is going to be paying for the operation of the apparatus, vehicle inspections, gasoline, oil repairs, those types of things. Article six, Susan Neuss, who is basically our IT director, one of the tasks she performs, has been meeting with the fire chief and the deputy police chief to find an integrated software package that will tie in with our, the current IMC software that we have, which will allow the two departments to communicate. The police is going to be doing some dispatch work for the fire department. So that the high end, again, not to exceed amount, we're going to ask for an appropriation from free cash for approximately $35,000 for the new software. The Governors Academy has recently pledged a donation of $20,000 to the town of Newbury, and in discussions with their headmaster and business manager, we talked about this, this need that the town had for the software, and they agreed that they, you know, would like to see that money support this project. So, when we go to town meeting, the motion will be requesting only $15,000.
Well, they've not got a lot of exposure.
They do, they do. You know, they would like to see it go towards, you know, education or public safety, somewhere in that realm. Article seven is requesting $35,000 be added to the Department of Public Works' salary and wage account. The discussion on this one will likely revolve around two options. Right now, we're down two full-time people on the DPW back in, I think it was 2010 or 2011, right before I got here, when you had made significant cuts. Ultimately, we'd like to reinstate those positions as funding will allow. Right now, we contract out with an outside company to provide all the janitorial services for the town of Newbury, including the library, this building, the trailers. And we spend, we're projected to spend about, well, a little bit more than $47,000 this year. In consultation with the DPW director, he had suggested for approximately $35,000, he could hire a full-time person who would serve in a janitorial role, but could also be moved on to the DPW crew or put in a flow during the winter times. Now, when you say $35,000, that's what we think we could project for a wage, but then you have to add in benefits. So even looking at the most expensive benefit package, you're still less than what we're paying for an outside firm. So, it's going to be a discussion on what you'd rather see, if you'd rather see it done in-house, or you'd rather continue to contract out. If we want to continue to contract out, then his recommendation and mine as well, is that we need to go up to a public bid process, because it's, the role has kind of expanded over the last two years to ensure that we get the most competitive pricing. So that's what that article is requesting. Article eight is on the capital improvement plan. It's requesting $60,000 for. is on the capital improvement plan. It's requesting sixty thousand dollars for replacing caulking, backer rod, and repairs to the masonry control joints at the Newbury Elementary School. We did a building envelope study about three years ago, and this was scheduled for two thousand and seventeen, but Sam Jawsell, the building commissioner, former facilities manager, in consultation with the school, they, they found some damage. Rather than try to replace it piecemeal, if we accelerated it one year and did the work now, that's about what it would cost us to do, the sixty thousand. And that would be, we look to the stabilization for that capital improvement.
And capital, CPC already looked at some of this stuff too, right?
Well, CPC, we have, this is coming. We'd be moving it up a year. Yeah. Article nine is requesting fifteen thousand dollars for the removal and demolition of the condemned trailers that we have on the current site. That was a quote that we received, I believe, from Kidderwrecking to do that. Article ten is requesting seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars, and that is to complete the septic system project on, at Mantle Field. Capital Planning Committee did discuss this at their meeting la, the week before last. Initially, we had requested sixty thousand dollars at town meeting. Went up to a competitive bid process, it came in significantly higher, this additional work that's necessary, electrical work that wasn't considered, and site development costs. And the low bid, we, we would need to add another seventy thousand to, to just get to the low bid. So we all agreed that we wanted the project complete. We've been talking about it for at least as long as I've been here, and I think you had it on your plate before then as well. Capital Planning Committee said, you know, despite the fact that the cost of more, their analysis and their review was to approve it, and they still stand on that approval. Article third, well, actually, my numbering's wrong on the warrant. This would be article eleven, is to establish a pegged access and cable-related fund. This is acceptance of a section of master general law that would allow us to establish basically a revolving fund for a peg access. It's just a housekeeping item. We have it currently as a special revenue fund, and that's not a method of accounting for it. Article fourteen, yeah, old article fourteen, new article twelve is the Barton property. The town has been presented a purchase and sale agreement on that parcel. I don't have the documentation yet. I believe Martha has it. What we have to do, because that property is currently under chapter sixty-one B, is the town has to write a first refusal in purchasing that parcel if you're interested in doing it. So I just put this on here as a placeholder. We only have a hundred and twenty days in which to act. So if, if you wanna leave it on here for now, and if by the time town meeting rolls around, you've decided you're not gonna exercise your, the option, we can just move no action on that. If it's something that you see as a valuable piece of property for the town to consider acquiring, we can leave it on and take action.
So our discussion should be, what could we use that for, or what could we use part of that for as we go on?
Sure.
Maybe we could use part of it and sell the rest of it to a home side or some other property side of use, why we would do it.
And part of the process will require the Board of Assessors, the Planning Board, I think Conservation Commission comes into it. They'll make recommendations to you as well, on, on whether or not they think that's an appropriate purchase for the town to make. The next article is asking for town meeting's approval on the Triton Regional School District proposal to the debt authorization of up to four million dollars of the renovation project, the stadium renovation project. The school committee has already voted to approve it. The three communities need to unanimously support it as well, because it's a debt authorization. Raleigh has already passed an override and will not be putting, will not be calling a special, a town meeting just to act on this. No town meeting or no action is deemed an automatic approval. Salisbury will be putting it on their warrant to take action, and this, if you decide to leave it on, would be our opportunity to take a formal vote at town meeting. Article sixteen is the road acceptance of Livingston Lane that you heard at your last Board of Selectments meeting. And the last one is the amendments to the charter that had been discussed previously, but we didn't take any action on it. The issues, the housekeeping issues that we still have are the Board of Fish Commissioners, whether they would remain an elected board because of the identified conflicts of interest and ethics issues, because of the fact that two of the three members actively participate in clamming. By making them appointed, they could file disclosures.
So this, this section thirteen is really just housekeeping needed to do some of these things in that process?
Right, right. These are, there are three housekeeping items, so that's, that's the first one. The second one is acknowledging the new, the relatively new creation of the principal assessor position. We never had that in our charter before, so we have someone serving it, but we haven't identified the role in our charter. The board had also discussed the tree warden position right now. The DPW director is working side by side with the tree warden, which was an elected position. So you need to talk about whether or not you want to make that an appointed position, and the DPW director would just continue on at June thirtieth, I think was the agreed-upon date.
Do we, do we have a vote? No? I thought we voted on that. Maybe we did. We should look.
Yeah. And then the only other thing was changing the time period on how many days prior to the town meeting, we would submit our recommendations to the finance committee. Basically, what happens in practice is we do it about thirty days, and what it had said in the, in the charter was seventy-five days. So those were the items, if you still want to.
In the two, in the one I read last night, the administrative assistant was both in the language for appointing and for being hired by you. Are you trying to move it from being appointed by us?
No, you appoint your Board of Selectmen's administrative assistant. Well, now it's, it serves, it used to be two separate positions, but now it's one. And I appoint the town administrator as administrative assistant, but we have one person serving the role now. So I guess we'd have to figure out what to do with that. But the principal assessor and the assessors clerk with a new name.
Why, why would it make more sense for you to be appointing the principal assessor versus us appointing the principal assessor versus the electing of the principal assessor? What are the theories?
Principal assessors, not, my knowledge, have been in elected role ever here. Not the Board of, we're not talking about the Board of Assessors. We're talking about the position that Michelle Brand supports.
Ah, okay.
So just like everyone else in town.
Right, right. And the, the way the act was written, when you originally wrote it, the administrator appoints the departmental managers with the exception of, I believe, the police chief, town council, town clerk's elected. So it would be consistent with that.
Am I have a question? This is an act.
What are we doing today? Do we have to go back and post these one by one to put on the warrant? Should we direct the warrant?
We have to, you have to decide if we, if you want these to stay on the warrant for discussion, because we have to produce sign and post the warrant Monday.
Well, I mean, if we want them to stay on the warrant for discussion, if we don't do the discussion today, when are we gonna discuss it? So we have to accomplish that today. Because we're not gonna get it done next week if we haven't got time to do it. That's what the meaning for this meeting was.
Right.
So we should go back and take one by one and see if we want it to stay on the warrant.
Yep. And, and the one thing that isn't on here currently on the draft that would be added would be the forty thousand dollars, an additional appropriation to be added to the professional and technical services account.
Which, which I haven't.
Yeah.
So depending on where we number it, there's a hole anyway, so maybe.
Yep.
All right, so, as I understand, we're gonna take a separate vote for each article to have it remain on the warrant. Am I right?
Well, you take a vote, yeah. And, and the Board of Selectmen also takes a vote in whether or not to recommend.
That's right, to recommend the stay on the warrant. So.
Are we gonna have opportunity to discuss these?
I'll have, that's, you know, first motion, second motion, discussion.
Okay.
All right. Article one, to see if the town will vote to receive the recourse of the Selectmen's School Committee, Regulus School Committee, and all of the town officials back to within. That's just what happens at town meeting. So that happens anyway. So motion.
To approve article one.
To recommend that it's.
To recommend article one.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Article.
Aye.
Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of ten thousand dollars or any other sum to be added to the storm water management account, are at their own relationship too. Tracy gave us a good explanation for that. That's John and his folks working to save us so much money for stormwater management phase three. So, motion?
Motion to recommend.
Any discussion?
Is this in, this, so this will be established, a permanent account for them? Are, are we looking at funding, they've been getting five thousand dollars a year. We will probably continue to be funding at around that level. This just gives them a little extra reserve if something comes up?
Well, we want it, we want it to remain in the account, so we'd be asking to make an annual appropriation of ten thousand, so it would, we'd be establishing a fund when the full, the full effect of this project takes place. It's gonna cost us a considerable amount of money.
Okay.
When, when the mandate is finally, you know, given to us, yeah.
And, and as I understand that, we don't have the capability, but we're gonna, somewhat with Newburyport to do some water testing too within this, right?
Correct.
And there's an expense for that. So that's what that really is.
And it can get very, very expensive, but most people don't realize if you include in the state roads, there's almost a thousand drains. That's a lot of work, a lot of.
I have a question too. Are you done, Dan?
Go ahead.
It says here, and I'm new to this video, so please forgive me, to raise and appropriate or transfer, which is it gonna be?
The motion, my recommendation will be that the motion be made for free cash, to transfer from free cash. This is the language, so it provides us with some flexibility between now and when town meeting actually happens, that you can change it if you need to. This is the recommendation.
This is gonna come out, you recommend this comes out of free cash.
Article three. Oh, motion. Motion to recommend. Do we have it?
We have that.
Then we need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of fifteen thousand dollars or any other sum to be added to the police department salary and wages account. For the school reserve police officer, are at in relationship there too. And remember, Tracy said this is a mechanism to get the money that's already been given us back into where it should go on. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds from a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars or any other sum to be added to the police department salary and wages account to fund a code enforcement officer or two, are at their own relationship. And that's kind of a thought about putting out discussion for having people that have a tertiary ability to write a ticket, like a handmade kind of thing on Plum Island for some of the parking that exposes that, to enforce the trash regulations. So, do I have a, is there a second?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Yes. You want to start?
Go ahead. My question is simply, is this going to generate more revenue than it costs if we're writing parking tickets and giving fines for littering?
My expectation would be initially, it would probably exceed it based on what I've seen out on the island the last two years. Long-term, probably not, because once you start your enforcement and people understand that you're enforcing it, usually those behaviors stop.
Okay.
Or are curtailed.
Um, I'm, I'm a little torn on the idea of, of enforcing, I know there's an issue down there, and I've seen it, and it's nasty, but I'm, I'm a little torn on the idea of a code enforcement official without providing, you know, alternate means of cleaning up the mess like that.
There is.
You know what I'm saying?
All you need to do is to hire a rubbish person to come down there and handle the rubbish the same way the rest of us in town do. One of the major problems is, is they will rent cottages out, and the homeowner will not take care of the rubbish, and the renters just throw it wherever they can. If there's an available dumpster, that's what they're gonna do. And that needs to stop. And this is the voice of experience, because I did the rubbish contract for the Board of Health many, many years down there.
So my concern is, is it, is there a way that we can, I know you looked at those trash, trash.
I don't really wanna speak to that. They made a presentation to the board.
Our pool's off, homeowner board, I know, some homeowner board, but we were discussing the other night, signs in, carry in, carry out. From what I heard, every, every park, every beach, any place that has those signs, it's worked beautifully. So I don't want to start being a process, which you get to believe, didn't you think the way they were talking, they're gonna do it? It sounds like it's gonna be a very good idea. I've been vacationing there and living there for, no, living there fifty years, vacationing there for seventy-five. So what can I tell you, other than my kids and I always brought in, brought out. We never, never were there. It can work, and it does work. So if not, there's a three hundred dollar fine, at least, that's what we want to raise, or three hundred dollar fines, that's, that's up, is it littering?
So you think that the Board of Health is making a recommendation not to put those trash barrels out there?
No, no. What about, what trash barrels? We don't have trash barrels.
The big-belly trash barrels that were presented. They're, they're, they're extremely expensive. It's, it's, it's an effective product, but you will, they'll only allow you to lease the barrels. You don't own them. You only lease them, and the town has to empty them.
These are motorized trash.
Pay for the disposal compacters.
These little compacters.
And not to leave you with a, you know, an image, but one of the major issues we deal with is dog mess. People leave the bags and putting those into a compacting environment. It's.
Okay, the other major issue is, if you have a dumpster or trash barrels in the center of town, it is potent for blatant abuse. That's exactly what happens. I mean, I've seen it firsthand. I dealt with it firsthand.
You should get to see the last, who went, somebody went, that was terrible. They were even with a black string and mattress. There's nobody who goes to the beach with a box and a mattress.
That's just, that's a view of an unguarded game.
That's right. That's my fear. I used to do it. When I did dog control, and I would go up with my stick at five o'clock in the morning. People would come down and start doing things like that. And one man was very nice, and he said, if I was you, he says to the gentleman, I wouldn't, now I'm saying gentleman, I, if I were you, I wouldn't throw that. Look who's across from him. He said, I don't care who she is. And he threw his trash out. I, I was useless. What was I doing there? I had a stick. Was I gonna hit him with a stick?
Yes, don't you why not?
I should have, really.
So I'm kinda, I'm, it kinda leaves a very bad taste in my mouth to just, for lack of a better word, sick a dog officer down to the people that are doing the wrong thing in writing tickets without showing something in good faith to the Plum Islanders that were going to help you solve your problem. That's kind of the way I feel.
Well, that, I think, you know, having heard the distress that there are no lifeguards and the feeling that there's no services being provided, I don't know if we want to look at, since we have more free cash now, starting a return to lifeguards. I think the idea of unprotected dumpster has made the problem worse, you know. You know, asking there not to be a dumpster there where people think this is where all of the trash that comes to the beach should go might be, might be appropriate. We certainly have to make a change down there, because the system is not working now and it's upsetting the residents, so how we change it to make it work better, I'm not sure.
You know, and then we have some hands in the audience. It's perception, and obviously the perception, a different type of perception was precipitated by the fact that we allowed a, you know, a dumpster went in. Different people helped with the dumpster, I think it was us in the beginning and then Palm Island Foundation, so, but, you know, I know, I don't know what Salisbury, who charges to come into it, I don't remember if there's a dumpster, I don't think so. I mean, I know when I go on my boat to Sandy Point, I don't pile my trash on the beach for someone to pick it up.
I agree.
And when I come back to the, when I come back to the ramp in Newbury after being down on the beach and never drinking a beer or doing anything like that or eating a sandwich, but, I mean, I might have trash, I don't leave it in the piling lot, stuff it in the porta potty.
Of course not.
If you can drag it out there, you can drag it home.
I mean, that, so anyway, but anyway, Bob, go ahead.
It, you know, it's, it's that dilemma that I think anytime you have a public facility, you face, just, our company cleans the beach, and we've been doing that for probably the last five years. If you go to the Newbury Port parking lot, they have two or three trash receptacles with the reduced, the dome cap, a six inch opening, because it's parking with a public doster. The right of ways that are used by residents or, or people that have permanent parking, down on Fordham Way, you, you don't have any trash accumulation there because there are no really public parking spaces. It's, we all take pride in our own community, when you're using the boat ramp jet, this is your home, your community, it, it's a natural to take that, it's, and I hate to say this, you have, at Center Island, you have a handful of parking spots that unrestricted. So you have a lot of transient traffic that comes in and out of there, and they don't take the same pride of being a resident and being a part of the community that the permit side does. So, I think you have to look at this, if you're going to continue to have free parking unrestricted, then you've gotta have a couple of receptacles to go with that. Or make it all parking, try permit, you don't get to go to Salisbury and park for free, you don't get to go to the parking lot in Newbury Port and park for free.
Didn't we already do that though? Didn't, don't we have?
No, it's a public space.
And, and maybe you limit that, that after a certain period of time, or it's limited for an hour or two hours, and, but, that, that's really part of it. Because the other right of ways, you don't have any trash accumulation, which is your people, you know, your residents using it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it.
It's less.
You always say that one percent, but it. Alright, now listen, our problem though exists, and why this could be on the warrant, or it might not be on the warrant, is the fact that every time we tried to reduce our exposure with either a small trash can, we still get beds parked aside. And if there's nothing there, then they stuff them into the porta potty.
And so, how about when we.
So, I mean, they filled it up last time.
Yeah.
So, that being said, I don't know what to do. Go ahead, Carrie, you raise your hand.
My only suggestion is if you do have the, the trash receptacle, that, like when I walk on, my dog on the Newbury Port Mall, they have small, very small trash cans, they have like a lock in the front, just a small opening for dog poop. So, dog poop's the problem, if you next to the, then you have one that is for dog poop, maybe that would solve that problem. And that's it, I would, you know, whether you have it or not, I don't care, but it's just a suggestion.
Maybe a little better lighting at Center Island where it's not quite as, you can pull up now and probably, and tuck into a corner, and, and someone can push something out of the back of a, a pickup truck or something. I mean, Newbury Port doesn't have this problem in their parking lot, and we do an hour, so what are we doing differently? Yeah.
Yes.
We are investigating as part of a much larger proposal, paid parking on the island in, in various lots, as well as along the main north, northern boulevard and the, the Center Island area. The, the revenue that we hope to generate from that proposal, if it should move forward, is going to go towards better lighting, improving the crosswalks in the area, bringing back lifeguards, addressing trash, but it's not a fully, it's not ready to go yet, the whole proposal. We're, we're trying to finalize what we expect to bring in for revenues, so that will be part of it, it's just not ready yet. And rather than go through another season of what we're, we faced during the last two years, I thought this was an alternative, that we're just eliminating the problem temporarily until we can move forward with the, the paid parking proposal.
I mean, a lot of this makes sense too, go ahead.
When I lived in a different city, what, we had the same problem of dumping sites used that way, and one of the things that worked very quickly was a 24-hour lighting that was sensitive to movement. And it was combined, although there was cost, it was combined with a photo going off every time the light was tricked. So, what it did is it gave the, and it stopped it, it stopped all illegal activity in that area, because no one knew when, who was watching, when and what it meant.
Okay, that, that being said too, I mean, Bob's recommendation for some of the parking spots being there, but also, what we had going on at the island, Bob, let's say, is we do have paid parking lots too. And I would say that a lot of the people that are paying to park don't care to do stuff on them.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point, Chuck.
I mean, it's, it's just, I don't know, let's take a vote on this, and I mean, it's not cast an eye on as a solution.
You might have another question.
Alright, but if the board doesn't like it, you know, we don't have to, we can go back to, in our next selectmen's meeting, trying to grind something else out for the spring law, uh, spring meeting, go ahead.
It says here that you've been moving $25,000 to add to the police department salary wages to fund this code enforcement official. Why, why do you need to have another person down there, why can't the police department now, as the way they do out on Scotland Road and do speeding type things, why can't they do that instead of parking them on Scotland Road, parking them down Palm Island?
They were doing it on Palm Island. They can't be there 24/7.
No.
I think the idea of this was.
These were part-time seasonal employees, we could have a few of them, then we could run them, we know when the hours are, when people are, you know, an early shift and a later shift, so that was the recommendation.
Yeah, I think getting people to start observing the rules, but may not solve the problem long term, and it may, it won't make it suddenly disappear entirely. It will decrease the issues that we're having, and since we are looking at another solution, that hopefully will do a better job long term. And perhaps the, the camera and the light at that location can be a part of that long-term solution. I'd say this one makes sense for right now, and as you said, maybe it will be reviving positive initially, until people realize, oh, parking isn't forced on the island, and you do have to take your trash. And at that point, hopefully the next plan will be in place, we can either reduce or eliminate these positions and have a system that is friendlier and works better for everybody.
My last question is, when, and I don't remember, I don't know the answer, when the lifeguards were there and there was somebody manning the beach, was the problem, problem with the trash the same?
No, because lifeguards were there, and when they came down and they saw somebody, they would yell, and they would take the trash and bring it up to, we had 55 gallon drums, or whatever they call them, drums back in those days, and then they would make the people take it up with them.
Maybe bringing the lifeguards down could solve part of this problem as well.
It's the same with the dogs on the beach, we never had a problem as bad when the dogs on the beach, came down the beach when the guys were there, because they would whistle and get the owner and get them to get everywhere. Either they had a call on their little whatever, and the, our dog control officer would come down. But when we lost, I'd be lost.
Frank, last, last, go ahead.
Yeah, just so, so you know, when we eliminated lifeguards on the beach, it was, I think, 2010, it was costing us over $60,000 a year, six lifeguards.
I do remember that well.
Yeah, fifty-two, that's $60,000, right?
The thing is, lifeguards are only here a certain amount of time. This is happening all the time.
And we're working to it all?
Well, yeah, we're working to.
It's.
You know, not as much, I agree, absolutely, Bob. I think this is something that the people should say no to, so I don't think we should put this on, and put it on the town floor?
That's a good point, now we have a recommendation.
Yeah, just wanted to comment, you have these beautiful, brand new signs over this here saying where all the fines are for all things, there is no, there is no enforcement. And when the police do go up and down in their new, new ATV, they're not stopping anybody for having a beer on the beach.
No.
They're not stopping. So, you know, I, I think it's important, if, if, if this is just on cap until people understand that we are enforcing our own rules, to then, you know, put this on and let, let people say, yeah, we're gonna enforce it. And then it may tail off at some time, but right now, we just understand, literally, we want the police to do it, but when they are there, we're enforcing.
Alright, Chuck actually has a good point about leaving it out for someone besides us to make that decision, and that would be leaving it on, so, we have a, a motion that we recommend, and I'm ready to take a vote. All those in favor of reading Article four as stated? Aye?
Aye.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of $10,000 or any other sum to be added to the fire maintenance account or act in relation there too. Once again, Tracy explained this as the fact that we needed a mechanism to be able to fund the ability for the equipment to move and be maintained, that $10,000 was put in that place. Do I have a motion to recommend?
No, hold. Second?
Second. Any discussion?
So this is once again a creation of a new account that will hold money in it if it is not all used in a given term, or is this in addition to an account that's existing?
No, this is an appropriation, it's an addition to the existing account.
What is the current account funded at?
$10,000.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's gonna come out of what? Raise and appropriate.
Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of $35,000 or any other sum to purchase the fire department software or an act in relation there too. Do I have a motion?
Second motion.
I have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Didn't Tracy say that $20,000 or $35,000 is being funded by the governor's?
Fifteen grand.
Should be amended on the floor.
Yeah, the motion on the floor will be requesting $15,000.
Oh.
Yep. Yep.
Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, which I thought was the same one again, a sum of $35,000 or any other sum to be added to the DPW salary wages account for the maintenance janitorial slash ma- janitorial position or act in relation to there too. Do I have a motion?
Motion ready.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Again, I'm gonna go back to the Palm Island issue, could this person help Delaro?
Too much, that wouldn't be in their draft description.
I think this person is the thought that if they're pleading at different times or something, but if, I mean, are we talking about hiring someone that could jump into a snowplow too?
Yep.
Yep.
So, I mean, we're, we're trying to fill a hole and accomplish a task, so I think that was the thinking behind this.
And so, would, since they'd be working for BPW, would they also be able to do maintenance things like a broken door handle and a library?
That's exactly what we want them to do, yep.
So, almost a.
Maintenance janitorial, and yet they could work on a big extent of the snowstorm, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article.
Did we finish off six, did we find ours out, I think we.
Yeah, we did, we voted for it.
Alright, alright, just checking, stay with me.
Now, that's usually what I do, Jay. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of $60,000 or any other sum to move and replace all the existing corking and backer rod from all the stationary control joints at Newbury Elementary School or enact in relationship there to a scene to be maintenance, that is, it's really quicker than what was expected, so it must be very important. Do I have a motion?
Motion ready.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
Is this something, how regularly are we gonna be doing this, is this something we can do in-house, or is this something we're bidding out?
No, this would be bid out.
Yeah, we don't.
And how long do we expect this essential pointing on the school to, to get us through, what'd you say, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years?
I'd have to pull the report up, you know, whether it's likely, it'd be useful out of that.
I mean, I think you can, how old is the school now? It's probably approaching 20.
Is it for us, honey?
I'd say a useful lifespan is 15 to 20 years.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
Wait. Who's, where? No, you?
Has the cocking been tested?
I believe so.
For asbestos or for any.
Oh, I don't know about that.
So.
I don't know about that.
Probably work starts before your arson, but you should double check exactly what it is to make clear that the.
Sure. What'd you say again, Eric?
The older ceilings had asbestos in them, and so just making sure, and probably 20 years, hopefully not, but, you know, if you think it's $60,000 and it's something else that requires hazardous radiation, it's gonna be a different blowout.
I don't remember any asbestos when I went to school there.
I know. You weren't seeing, you weren't seeing.
Oh, but I feel it in my lungs, I remember doing some removal of that.
It's not, it's not.
I know, but we moved the ceiling panels, right? Come on.
I think, I like, we need to take care of what we have, so we're in the same position.
Now, I'm a little, I mean, I'm a little thing that seemed to make a lot of sense at first. So this is interior.
No, exterior.
I thought it was exterior.
Exterior.
So, I, I don't think you were licking the walls inside, so. So now I understand, when it got the ceiling inside and stuff, that it's losing. Huh? Exterior, this is all exterior.
Yep.
Alright, that makes really good sense, because now it's exposed to weather and it's not upstairs, and I think we need to move on.
No, I'd like to take care of that school, I don't want a building I want.
So, listening to Eric, who's probably pretty smart, do we need to amend that to somehow checking to see if the cooking?
We can do that now, we can do that too now.
Yeah, just, good, so, and if it changes, then we'll have to revisit this. Alright, however, so hearing that from Tracy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, a sum of $15,000 or any other sum for demolition and approval of condemned town office trailers or any act in relation, or in relationship there too.
Motion to recommend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think it's a good idea, but boy, I'd hate to take them out when it could be done in the process of rebuilding. But I don't know, is it, is there a need that's drastic that we don't know to get them out, are they just producing so much mold they're gonna be hired up, do they get rid of, does anyone know?
I, I would guess say when you're finalizing a sewer connection, you have to remove the septic field, and they're probably in the way, that's probably what's pushing that.
And we're gonna, we have to get rid of them, so getting rid of them.
Can you use them at the farm? I know, no, 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 that's easy.
Same said, wasn't as easy as just rolling them out of there, so I think that means that if you let them rot in place, then they just do that.
Well, I think the concern, if I remember correctly, the concern was this crane, Chuck, remember?
That's exactly right, it's not an easy removal, you have to bring them up over the wires, over the generator, and now Mike's existing trailer, kind of a tough pick, if I was in a crane, I'd probably want to. If I was in a crane, I'd probably wanna bring in ninety tonner just to reach out, so...
And it makes sense in some respects that there's some integrity left in them or that it'd fall apart in the winter.
So, when you bring in a big, big crane like that, fifteen's pretty cheap actually.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds to some of seventy-one thousand five hundred or any of the sums to purchase and install a septic system on man to field or act in relationship there too. Do I have a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Hi, can I speak?
Sure.
I know it's on the Capitol Planning Board to do all this, but I, it's the way I personally feel, is I really would like to put focus, hyper-focus on the needs of the police and fire. I'm hesitant, I don't like to, where is this gonna come from? This is gonna be...
Free cash.
Free cash. So, we have two million in free cash, and we're thinking about using some of that for this OPM, which I can't keep thinking of other people's money. And then we're gonna add, and talk about another seventy-one five. I'd like to just, personally, the way I feel, I'd like to hold on this. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying, let's put a hold on it for now until we at least see the direction of the needs of the police and fire in town hall, and maybe we'll get it again in the spring.
Mr. Chairman, there. Sure. As a rebuttal to that, um, we can't ignore all the needs of all the other facilities just because we have one need on the police station. Hopefully, the police station will be dealt with on an override, and we'll be able to use the money from free cash to do this. That would be my hope.
And I agree with that. I'm not saying let's not do this. I'm just saying, let's wait to do it until we see the direction of the town.
At the completion of this, will we have toilets that are usable?
Yes.
It's still gonna be more to do than all working bathrooms.
There will still be more work to do on the building.
Right, but we'll have bathroom capabilities. Now, no, you'll have it.
What she referring to in septic, um, did she mention septic in that sense?
The installation of a septic system, that's very important.
You're not gonna have the toilets built out, though. There'll have to be more money to build it.
We'll still have, we'll still not have a usable bath.
So, is there already money appropriated for this, Jim?
Yes, sixty thousand.
So, there's already, it's sixty thousand, so you sign for this?
That went through town meeting, right?
Yeah. And now we're looking for another seventy-one five?
No, no.
Yes.
Added on it?
Yes.
And put up to a hundred and six, was it?
Yeah. Now, in moving forward with this project, to, to jump on what JR said, you know, I threw that building out with my dad and my little brother, uh, as volunteers. What of the rest of the work can be done by town volunteers? And what is now that we're sort of, it's more completed, it has to be done through the bidding process? Because, you know, we, we just went out and we, we did it. True construction came out and they helped us side it. You know, it was all done pro bono, up to the point, pretty much, that it's as now. Do we have to now be spending money or can we get town investment of not money, but goodwill into sheet rock and holding the wires, connecting the plumbing? Or are we bound legally at this point? Okay.
People wanna volunteer to do it, or something, and they just have to sign away with us.
Two people, I'm sorry, I mean, you talk over here. Uh, two people who are already volunteered to come in and do a lot of the plumbing. And I've had a couple people ask if they could put some money into it for, you know, toilet facilities and sinks and stuff like that, so, you know, we're staring down the barrel, but we can't put that in there until we get a system in.
I just, yeah, I wasn't sure what had...
Right.
You know, I put in a lot of time and then I stopped paying attention because I'd done my part, and, yeah.
So, can we, after the, I didn't, how much total for the septic system? Hundred and six?
I think it was a little over a hundred and six was the bid for the installation, but then there's some additional electrical work that needs to be done.
So, it's a hundred and six inclined, and is there anything else that's needed, anything else needed to do besides volunteer labor? I mean, the building's a sh- I mean, a shell right now.
Yeah, we need to pull wire, do the plumbing, sheet rock, floors.
When is the money gonna come to purchase the stuff for that? Is that gonna be...
Well, Chuck was talking about we could...
Well, it can be volunteered, and, but this is the next step. We cannot really move forward with any of it until the system is done.
So, to clarify it, so everyone knows, um, if we were to appropriate a transfer or raise seventy-one five, what is the total amount of money that is going to the septic project now? Is it a hundred and thirty-one five? So, just so you, I'm quoting a hundred and six, it's a hundred and thirty-one five.
Have free cash.
Which means, I mean, it doesn't temper how I look at it all as a support, but just so you aren't talking the wrong figures.
I don't know what else needs to be done on that building, but it's great interest when I'm throwing things out and I'm getting ready. I, I saw in front page of the Daily News, I don't know how many years ago, maybe last year or ten years ago, I, I still have it, 'cause I wanna bring it to you, because I wanna see what people can do. The Newbury State Police barracks, it was only X amount of years old, the roof was leaking, they got the prisoners, what was it, to come down? Is there a law that says what the person does for a living or can do to help when it, when it's volunteering, like when the sheriff brings people down to help? Can, can you appeal to things like that, or just anything?
We do, we do.
We do a lot.
I was wondering how that would work, I knew that building...
It's a good idea, we'd use it.
Well, I'm always, you know, when you put up hands in here for five cents, you think of a lot of things to do.
Personally, that's the way I feel. I still feel as if the needs of the police and fire should come for the town hall. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying wait.
Sorry, we have a motion. Does, uh, anyone else wanna discuss it further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Coming with that? Four. All those against?
One.
Thank you, by the way. Can we, in this little hiatus right here, appropriate a slash article slash eleven slash twelve? But can we talk about maybe right in here, the article to enhance the professional funds to maybe either forty or sixty thousand dollars or whatever, to maybe move the municipal buildings committee guidance we have to go forth and hire some...
Questions for study.
Yeah, now, would the correct word be hire an engineer or just an engineer to study? What was the correct word? So, you can help us with the motion.
So, let's just say that we're talking about a town hall police station.
Yep.
New that we previously discussed, about fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. If you throw out a number of a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot for construction, you're at six point two million. Take twenty percent of that, it's a million and two, you've got about a seven point five million dollar project. Take the construction cost to six point two and somewhere between two and a half to three percent, the OPM's fee is gonna be between a hundred and fifty-five to two hundred thousand dollars. So, forty thousand dollars to get an OPM started, to start at a higher level, to basically reassess the information that we already have, not sure how far it's gonna go. If the OPM can bring in a, um, public safety service specialist consultant that knows, and can assess, you know, the type of police, different police stations there are, that would be helpful. So, for forty thousand dollars, it seems that we might be hiring engineers or somebody like CSS and architects to say, okay, we've got all this information, we need to repackage it, and we need to do some additional assessment of what we have. So, your overall estimation for their fee is at a hundred and forty thousand?
From OPM?
An OPM, at, at somewhere between two and a half to three percent.
But that's for the whole project, isn't it?
That, that's for the whole project. So, I'm just trying to put this in perspective, that it, you know, is gonna spend forty and the total fee is a hundred and fifty, but if, but if hiring an OPM and having, you know, we told them, this is the project, this is the square footage, this is the site, this is the understanding about what we wanna do, of course, we need to vet it out, we need to double check it, um, we need some, some guidance to make sure of what we're proposing, but it would be a much more linear process than, okay, let's come in and let's assess and let's make two or three options.
Because what I gotta get is the ability to understand, like, if I were, and this is where public stuff goes right through the roof because of state master of law. If I was, um, the harness facility, making harnesses in the industrial park, I could hire a construction company to come in and give me a quote and build the building. So, what is there in between, I mean, that, and you could hold them to that cost, what is there in between that allows us, before we have to spend a hundred and fifty for the OPM? And is it worth the money to hire, once again, what you are alluding to and what you alluded to in your conversation up there? And does that person actually exist, Eric? Are we just thinking that there's someone out there to do this and there's really no one?
Yeah, I, I think we're treading onto thin ice here again, because it's, maybe it's this amount of money, maybe it's that amount of money. That's what the public just told us in this hearing. We don't wanna hear that. We want a solid number. Should we task municipal building committee to go back and get us? This is what we're gonna do, this is what it's gonna cost, then we present it to the people. We go in there now looking like, well, it could be forty, it could be one fifty, they're gonna eat us alive.
Eric, we do agree that usually an OPM comes more into play once the construction proj- project is going out to bid and you're doing inspections, signing off requisitions, and then just compliance with specification. Do you see a great advantage, uh, uh, other than s- scribe type of words at this point?
In the public process, from my understanding, I think you're correct. I don't know, though, but, I think, give me a week, and I can make a couple calls to the architects, and I can ask them who the OPMs were on their projects, and then I can call those OPMs and collect a few names. The experience of going through and advertising for OPMs, getting them in here and interviewing them will be a world of information, and we'll all be more educated for that process because we're asking them, what did, did you build and did you build the fourteen thousand square foot facility, and what were the overruns, and how did you manage it? And what, you know, what were some of the other issues that you encountered? And we'll, we'll get all that information just through the process, but I kinda see it hard to get an OPM started when we really don't know what we want, because they'll just be fishing. An OPM is a manager.
Right.
It's not an architect, it's not an engineer, it's not a structural engineer, it's not a professional public safety consultant, it's not a professional firefighter consultant, it's not a professional town hall operations manager consultant to manage it. So, they can manage the process, and sometimes municipalities aren't probably as, maybe as well off as I'd like to think that we are, and the first thing they go out is hire an OPM and say, what, where do we do it? So, we've got a lot of information, and I'll be the first to admit that it's, it's in a bag and it's not exactly as clearly as laid out, you know? Survey monkey ideas, website ideas, but it'll all be helpful. So, what's gonna get us to the next step? One thing I heard is that people, we have all this information, but it sounds like nobody understands it, or nobody wants to read it, or nobody wants to look at it, or we need another way to take that information and just lay it out in real A, B, C, D. Does it take someone else who's not in the room to be credible in order to take the same information and give it back to the same people?
Yes.
Well, I, I agree.
I'm not sure if you agree with that, though. If you have all the information, I think if the message is unclear on what we're doing,
But that message could become clear by a phone call.
Right, I think if, if you can do clarification...
We could do, we could, so the question is, if my board...
Eric, can you come back to your job?
If my board wants to, or if someone in our board wants to make the motion, we can clarify the fact that we want a, which I thought I gleaned from the people in the room, that we wanna build a police town hall, bang, gun, boom. We still have some thinking on the best way to put forward that process. Now, the other thing would be, because we started into this professional services, reduced cost, we also could make a decision even tonight, back to Chuck's thoughts that we don't have enough information, which I understand, we could vote for a town hall police station, and we could vote to take out a free cash or hire an OPM and go. So, let's talk to what we wanna do.
Okay. One of my two major thoughts on that whole thing is, one, we need to know what it's gonna cost before we present it to the people. The gentleman that got up to spoke, he said he did it for a living, said, this is the law. Seems like a nice guy, he seems knowledgeable. We don't know that for a fact. I think the municipal building committee should meet with town council and find out if it is in fact law. So...
It's chapter thirty, chapter one forty-nine.
Thank you very much.
It goes through pyramid of services, it goes through non-building, uh, non-building construction, uh, with labor, without labor, like flatwork, like roadwork versus building, just buying, uh, say you were to buy a new air conditioning system for the roof and you were just buying a unit, but your DPW could hook it up, it's all in there, it's all sex, it's all done by dollar amounts, and your, your needs need to be...
I don't offense to the other gentleman that spoke, but I'm definitely gonna take your word for it, but, again, I trust you explicitly.
And I know Alicia wants to talk, I think what we're gonna have to deal with is, once again, this is going to town meeting. It's not something that is cast in stone, because they have the right to change it. So, what I just modified somewhat, because I was listening to Eric's ambivalence about if we're gonna accomplish anything, we're spending sixty grand, should we decide what we wanna do once and for all here tonight? Should we then take to town meeting the ability to hire that OPM to start that process at a hundred and fifty grand? And they might say no.
That's what it's like, about, why isn't, isn't that a town meeting, it's why you propose something, and then that's why town meeting is so meeting, and not say city council is like in the city meeting.
All right, Eric, Alicia, or Tracy?
Just based on what I thought I heard today in the discussions, for sixty thousand dollars, I agree with Eric, hiring an OPM right now may not be the right step to take, but we can certainly hire, or I should say hiring the OPM. We can hire an OPM, we can talk to one that, that, the person they were referring to in Andover, or the person that's doing the Salisbury job, to guide us through the process and to provide at town meeting a discussion of how the process would work, because I heard a lot of unclarity about the process, which is perfectly normal, because it's a very cumbersome, the Massachusetts bidding process is very cumbersome. But for fifty or sixty thousand dollars, we can hire some consultants, and we can take Eric's work and the committee's work, and we can look at the proposal that's been presented twice compared to the proposal that was basically approved by the hand count today, the town hall police proposal. We can put those two side by side, we can use an estimator to fine tune Eric's numbers, we can do additional work that we'll need to do to get to the next phase. Is, is all of that money gonna be committed to the OPM? To, to hire that person, we're gonna have to go out to a, a selection process, we're gonna have to have a new committee in place. We're not there yet. We're not there yet. So, using that money, that professional and technical services money that was suggested today, can get us the additional consulting work to keep us moving in the right direction for the next step.
What, what people heard was twenty-five to forty, people didn't hear fifty to sixty. FYI.
Well, for, for under ten, I think you could hire somebody and say, what we need is, we need an outline of a step-by-step, what is the process? What have you done? If you've done Salisbury, then come in and tell us what they did. If you did Andover, if you did Stotner, you did whatever, and it's, we need to find somebody that's doing something today and not twenty, twenty years ago or ten years ago. I, I have a presentation that says get organized, and it basically, that's what I was crafting to show today, what would have been... to show today, but would have been way down the road over here. Step by step to tell you how to hire an OPM and basically what you need to do.
Just one question, Eric. With the bidding, the state bidding rules, it, and it was brought up earlier about leasing, if an independent developer developed a property and then, and then he built it out for it based on what you need in office space, is that, do those rules apply?
Yes.
Yes.
You can't circumvent the bid process.
Only for...
No, this is something you're renting, you're not...
This is still a separate bid process for leasing space? If we wanted to lease space, we'd still have to go through a competitive bid process?
Competitive is one thing, but state regulations often, you know, government regulations sometimes slow down the process, you know, because they don't know... I'm just curious, if it changes the rules...
They list exactly what they've bent the rules for. I've bent it for a couple schools, it's a couple of this. If we had a fire that wiped out the whole block and we say, and they would say, okay, you can forego, you don't have to advertise, but you have to do this. Or it's not like anyone got a miracle out there. So this, this is something that I'll send to each of you. It's just, it says get organized, it tells you about establishing a schedule. It talks about OPM, it talks about advertising, it talks about architects and engineers. It's a basic presentation that should be given and I would assume that the OPM would come in and give, basically give us this. And give us guidelines on, here's the most, probably ask them, what are the five most current projects that meet what we're proposing and tell us about them. Then, what I understood from today is, people didn't understand the information. It's not that they didn't agree the information was done, but they just don't understand it, it hasn't been presented in the right way. And that's the kind of thing that they want.
But what you, and your point is, I think we'll take it. What everyone left here hearing was Peter Erickson saying this is fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. I wouldn't exceed that number. I'd put it into the professional man, uh, professional services account and I'd use it for additional technical support to get this ready for town meeting. And leave it open like that. And, and I would only, while you weren't, I wouldn't even qualify, you're just increasing a light out, just like you're doing for the fire department. The oral argument can be, this is what was discussed at the meeting and this can provide some additional services if needed to get this to the finish line for the voting.
I think people were very clear that they wanted it specifically designated. They didn't want it just money out there that could be used in many different ways. I think people felt, I, I don't know much about it, but what they were saying was, that's what we don't like. It's not knowing exactly that you're gonna spend fifteen thousand for this position. If you're gonna just put money to a county, you again don't know who's using it, you may get some flashback.
So you're suggesting creating a new account?
No, I guess that it had, that it be just what the people asked for today, which was...
But I think that's the instruction you can have with Tracy and the board too, that if you put in twenty-five into that account, it's earmarked specifically if needed. If it's not needed, it reverts back to free cash.
I, if I may, Jeff, you keep on mentioning deciding things here tonight and I really, really hope that you're not still here tonight. My, I think, my inclination is to increase this fund more because I would hope that by the time we get to the spring town meeting, we can have resolved a number of these issues. We can have recommendations. And I'd rather have the funds available than to say, oh, we're only gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars, run through that fifteen thousand dollars and be stalled and not be able to move this project forward. I'd much rather say, we are going to increase this fund by sixty thousand dollars. If we do not use, if we only use twenty of it, we can take that other forty and pay down debt. But if we don't, if we run out of money and the project stalls again and we're back, instead of spring town meeting, to the following fall town meeting, we, not only is the project further from completion, but we have to move the police department. We have to result, get rid of the trailers, you know, the, our timeline is tight to solve these problems. I think giving ourselves a cushion of expenditure, given that we are not sure how much these things are going to cost, we just know we need to figure it out so we can get clear numbers. Everyone is freezing. I'm sorry about that. I have another deck if you'd like in the other room. My, yeah, my inclination is to provide us more of a cushion to hire the help we need to get this project all the way vetted out so we can present something that the people will hopefully get behind.
Real quickly, because we're grinding down, we're getting tired. I guess I'm confused because I kind of thought that maybe today this board might decide on moving a police town hall building forward, but just not sure of the configuration. But a little bit when Eric was talking, it could have been thrown back to first broader proposal or other things. My intention for bringing up this article is that, and if we're not ready to do this, I don't think we're ready to do anything. But I thought that the board was far enough along to recommend that we maybe put some money in the professional account to do some engineering on a police and town hall complex in the best way to maybe build it. And not be utilizing, is it better to go back to this, or is it better to go back to that, or, I mean...
Can I speak for a second?
You certainly can.
I think that...
And if we don't come out with something like that, I don't think we need to do it.
No. So the way I feel, and you guys may feel differently, is that we need, the board of selectmen needs to come up with a direction to municipal building committee to move in. And we need to cast, task them with a solution. And then once they come back with it, I am vehemently opposed to putting any money on a ballot and anywhere without the town of Newbury, the residents of town are gonna know what their dollar amount's going to, going to be. The whole kaboom. I think that that's what we have to decide. Do we wanna go with a police and fire combined, I mean, a combined police and, and town hall? I think that the fire department does need to be discussed. Should it be part of this solution right now? I don't think so. But I think that we have to look at that because there is an issue with them and it's coming. I think we need to have a plan. If we're gonna put money into the municipal building of the, the needs of the police department, I think to, it's very short sighted to not to even take into consideration the needs of the fire because it's coming. So I think we need to look in the short term, addressing the needs of the police department and the town hall. But I kinda like JR's approach of plug and build in, Legos. And if we can do it in five years from now, you know, we've already brought the sewer down and I personally think that, but I don't think that we're, I think if we put any money into any account to do anything, I think it's, boos us not to give the municipal building committee a direction to go with. I think it has to all be the same.
Now, the answer that, and I need the answer that, the best way, Ken. The whole thought tonight, and JR articulated it best.
I didn't feel like it.
We did. We had most agreement on the fact that we need to have a police and town hall complex. That said and done, and JR said the same thing. Also, there was a tremendous amount of conversation about if we'd have a drastic failure in the fire station because of sewer or anything else, we're gonna have to be able to react to that. So obviously, the movement would be in some ways to make sure that we at least protect our fire service. That's inherent within this proposal. But if we continue to talk about this and talk about this and talk about this, we're not going in this.
We need to make a decision.
We need to make a decision tonight. And the decision tonight has to be, we either vote for a police and town hall and we either charge, now, listening to you, Alicia, I think Eric probably doesn't have enough time in the world to come up with how much that's gonna cost us.
What, the police, the new new? We knew that.
A lot of that's been written here. It wasn't this at all, no.
Well, if that's, if that's there, but that's not including... But Eric, that was Plan A, but that didn't include like geothermal or anything else. You know, what's under the ground.
It didn't, it didn't, any sustainable issues, it didn't vet whether it was steel or whether we possibly could get away with wood or whether...
And that's where we have to start into, I think, our thought, the idea of putting an OPM in place to build it.
Well, but they need a direction for it.
Okay, so you wanna charge the municipal building committee with going back to the initial...
Which we all thought was a good idea. That's what we talked about for day one.
Well, is, is your caveat about be, the future extension into the fire, or no?
What's that?
Your, your suggestion was to do that, but also have the capacity to extend to fire later on.
I think we should... Exactly, not three. Three is a bad, a bad, bad idea. Second best idea is two phases. But I think whatever we design has to be ready to add to the station.
Is that what you're saying, Jeff, to include that?
Well, hold it before you, Eric, you speak. My thought is, if we've gone that far and you've got all these numbers and we agree on it, why don't we bring to town meeting the fact of putting an OPM in place and building it?
We have, CSS Architects has their report, which is most, almost all my information is based on. We have a plan in color that sits right here, that shows a new town hall and a new police station. It's just a conceptual design to say, all these, all these rooms fit on this site.
The original thing that was built that included the parking and everything else, right?
And then you asked, and Fred Thoreau said something and we showed, okay, so there was no basement underneath this building because the police station had a little bit of a, of a basement. And we showed how you could fit another, I don't know, nine or ten cars and what the cost would be for that. We have all that, we have all that in our recommendation. That, that could certainly be enhanced and brought forward and additional questions can be asked, like construction type, like, are there sustainable issues, sustainability issues like geothermal, they could possibly have a payback and have a savings for the town in the future.
How about the fire companies, are there a way to plug them in?
So the whole thought about having, yes, you could build that building in a way that you had a facade on this that made a town hall presentation to High Road. You could have a police station entrance that had, you know, was recognizable and everybody knew where the police station was. Then there possibly could be, you could build into the, um, the side of that wall, whatever the finishes is, the deal would be that the, you could connect it to the building, the building could be torn down. I think what we all said though, that is, as long as you have town hall, police and fire within this same block, from that end of their property to High Road, the synergies of being together were, were being met as best they could. If you really wanted to share the building, you could tear that building down, build a new building right next to it and, and there could be a police, uh, fire lobby that you could walk into, one dispatch desk and...
So we'd get the same synergy.
It'll take us a little longer to get there, but we'll arrive in the place where we need to be and a little more money.
And, and by doing that, by building the new fire station and the old fire station spot, now you have more parking spaces on the farther line.
My next question is, how about, um, how about, I'm gonna try to... How about, um, whose idea was it to have a structural assessment done at the fire, the fire company?
Mark, Mark Lickens.
So how about that idea? I mean, how is that, do that?
Couple thousand dollars.
Here's what I would suggest. If six point three million dollars to build a combined facility on this one, Plan A, and the soft costs are gonna be probably in the five hundred, six hundred range.
Well, no, for the OPM, well, twenty percent, I don't know, it's like a million.
So you're at seven point five million, that we already know is, is really the, the top end of the cost because we're being conservative, we're not, we're making sure we have enough money into this to get what we all, which you had a two-thirds consensus of is, is the real deal. I think if we tune that up and finalize that, and it's that seven point five, the fire department's important, that can be handled as a capital improvement over time with free cash, this is capital replacement.
Right.
So we, we can do that with, if on-hand funds help back. This has to be done through a bond. I think if we, if we look at that and then we put it together with total clarity, here it is, seven point five. Gene gets to redo the, the analysis on retired debt first. We may only save him twenty-two dollars, you know, in year twenty-twenty off our debt. But I think that, that will demonstrate that the message that we heard today and that we gleaned from the vote, is we're following up on that. And I, and I really think you can do this all at one time. You don't need to do the two steps. This was more of a sounding on these, on these first, for override.
So my question, getting back to the fire company, where their land and their building is owned independently by the, the benevolent society, whatever it is, we really can't do anything with that until we purchase that, purchase that...
No, no, we, we already maintain the building. We maintain the building in the lease fees that we pay. We, we pay their utilities, we pay their maintenance. What the fire department's gonna do, they don't articulate what their actual operating cost is. We're giving them eighty thousand dollars to maintain that building, their equipment, if that's the number. They're likely spending two hundred to two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. And it's been money that's how they've raised through their ambulance and other benevolent funds.
At the risk of sounding argumentative, Bob, we don't give the fire department the money. We give the board of fire engineers the money. They disperse it as they see fit for contractual means. So we gotta, we're walking a tight rope here.
Well, we used to call it the flat rate account was eighty thousand, it went to each company under two separate accounts. That they would then use to offset their operating costs. And that would be improvements, repairs and what have you. So it doesn't change.
If the municipal building committee is here...
I, I think we're getting a little off track here.
I think you should do it and do it right now.
We would say, and to make a recommendation, is that we did recommend the new new police and town hall here.
Right.
We then recommended a combined facility over there. Keeping the same mission statement that we always had, if we could combine a joint facility, we would be providing savings. If we built it right, we would be providing long-term value. If we kept all three departments within a block in this area, we would be meeting the criteria that we all thought was, was the best for the residents and for the employees to provide the best service to the town. So whether it's a combined public safety complex of fire and police or town hall and police, and it's here, it's, it's meeting the same criteria. And if the fire station has to drag or sit off on their own for a little bit in order to get this accomplished, the municipal building committee, members on it, would probably say, yeah, that's the recommendation we need.
Yeah, I think we have to concentrate on that and stay with that focus because we're all getting tired. The mind can absorb as much as the pluck can. I'm just waiting for a while, so...
What really silly stupid thing. When you send out a conceptual drawing, as I used to say that, this is not how it will look, it is a concept. Because people will start zoning in on whether you have a little doodad here. That's all. They'll go crazy on it.
Even the draft of plans that are colored are way too advanced.
Yep, exactly.
They're that far along in the process.
Why don't you just study, do the thing on the police station and get it going so that they can have that police station before the nine months or over, eight months or whatever it is now. You get that, that's real serious, unless this is all about.
Well...
I'll add the article to the line, Eric.
But let's, I need some money. I almost hear now that we don't need that engineer because Eric's got all the shacks and fags.
No, we, we need that.
And I mean, if it's all a faxing thing is, I mean, are we buying it, are we buying an engineer because we don't think we have the capability to take this to town meeting and ask him to, that we intend to build a police and fire station? Excuse me, a police and town hall?
Everybody said that there's lots of information, people are discovering that there's information. They just, the, the information needs to be... Everybody said that there's lots of information, people are discovering that there's information, they just, the, the information needs to be represented in a different way. And we need, we could hire CSS architects that already did the work, already has the plans. We can ask them to advance it, and then even, and hopefully even by October, or when is it?
October twentieth.
Plan. At least we would have printed boards or presentations by October.
Now we're back to where we were, so the motion should be that we hire someone to package this for town meeting, basically.
Additional technical services.
And it's gonna be, we're gonna move twenty-five thousand dollars in a professional account for this, so, will someone articulate that and make a motion? And we can discuss it.
I move that we appropriate twenty, raise or appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars and place it into the
Professional and technical services.
Professional and technical services fund. And, and in market for the, as we stated out there, for providing technical
Additional technical services for the
Town Hall Police.
Complex.
Complex.
Or, or design review services or something like that. This is the same concept that Eric presented last, a year ago.
We know that.
Well, but Alicia and JR weren't there at the time, and we all voted in favor, including Steve Thurlow. He's on D.
Do me a favor, do me a favor. Listening to what Eric just said, as I understand it, it would behoove us that he needs a little help to produce also some of those placards and pictures and boards. And I don't have a problem in the world helping a guy that's got all this work for him.
It'll add clarity that may get us over the finish line.
And they can start by saying, this is, this is the public safety complex, and this was eleven, this was eleven point six, and we moved on from that.
Right.
And you could say that.
Now, do we have, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chell.
Do we have any discussion?
Uh, go ahead.
David has something.
I would like, in the presentation that we asked from this board, that they compare the plan that has been most recently put forward, the plan for a renovation of Town Hall with Police, and a Town Hall Police renovation with the, for lack of a better term, Lego addition ability for, uh, Fire. I think all three of those should be looked at.
And could I just clarify, this all being presented, if this is approved, that's being presented probably at the annual town meeting? Is that right?
Meaning, uh...
Spring.
No.
No.
No, what's the date, October?
Well, you're gonna pass this article at the special town meeting.
October twentieth meeting.
Well, the addition, only for the additional engineering money.
Right, and so then that work that they do
Prepares us for the town.
For the town, the annual town.
Provides us all the tracks and figure.
I thought you were saying we're gonna push this off.
No, no.
Right, and so, the, the next step would be, is if one of this engineering is done, and we have more municipal building meetings, we have more board of selectmen meetings, we have more paid con out, and this is the next step
Fall or spring.
For the meetings, for the annual town meeting, right, spring. At some point, we could say, now is the time to hire the OPM and start the architect selection process. You don't have to hire anybody, but you do have to start filling out paperwork and figuring out what, how we're gonna go about this process.
All right, so that makes, uh, total sense to me. David, hurry back. We're gonna make a vote. All right, all those in favor?
I'm in favor of...
Damon, you can make the motion and, and add the Legos into it, so rearticulate your motion. Do you have it written down?
No.
Make your motion for the police and Town Hall to put twenty-five thousand dollars into, whatever, augment the ability for engineering and, and, and bringing it to the town meeting in the spring, and you can add the fact that, that the buildings are built in such a way that might someday future
Address the name of the fire.
To come to a solution of the, of the, but if he's hard presumed
She has the language.
I think that's
I can go that way, but I can tell you that somewhere along the line, you still need to have some thought.
Absolutely, you can, you don't have to say that explicitly, you can make that
That almost is underhanded.
You make that happen, happen, that's next. Make that presentation and say, and these are options.
I mean, if you're gonna have a situation that's for no money, we have to do, they enhance something, that's, okay.
We have a motion, yeah, we can take the vote.
Okay, so, the article will read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the professional and technical services fund. These fees will be used for additional technical services for the Town Hall slash Police Department proposal.
Proposal complex.
No proposals here. How do you write that so fast? But anyway, good, that's what's on the table. Any more discussion? 'Cause I love discussion. Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, it was easy.
To see if the town, Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions from Chapter fourteen, Section fifty-three F and three-quarter of Massachusetts General Laws, establishing pig access and cable-related fund as a separate revenue account effective fiscal year two thousand sixteen, or acting relationship to, and I forgot everything Tracy said. What does it do?
It's housekeeping and establishes a revolving fund for the, um, cable access franchise fees.
Ah, that's what it is, okay.
Uh, motion please.
Motion to recommend.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article fourteen, long and contracted, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from barrel funds for some, blah, 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 or any other sum to authorize the Board of Selectmen to exercise the town's option under Master M Law sixty-one B to purchase the property known as Pine Grove Newry Mass, consisting of approximately three point eight four acres off Clotus Road, as shown in the survey drawn by, anyway, it's a piece of property right down by the river. It could be for sale because it has to be taken out of sixty-one B, which I guess is recreational land. And the thought might be that it could be of use for the town, because the town always has to make this decision for sixty-one A and sixty-one B, and I think sixty-one C if it's ours now.
Yep.
So, that's gonna be made by just the selectmen if we choose, or does town meeting make that?
You'll decide whether or not you wanna purchase it, but then the appropriation would need to be approved by town meeting.
And the only thing I want the board to think of, we need parking for the ramp.
Yeah.
Part of that parking for the ramp could be utilized, and we could find uses to sell off the other parts, but anyway. And the price for that, which I guess we can't speak about, is not a lot of money. But anyway, go ahead, Chuck. Did you have something to say?
Motion.
Then we'll make a motion, for then we can have discussion, motion?
Yep.
I move to include this article.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
I think we should spend some more time looking at it, but I think it should go forward, and we should definitely present it before the people. But I think it could be quite valuable to the town to pick up this piece of property.
And if you think about that, I think, in part of that discussion, we ought to have things that it might be able to be used for.
Yes.
Because one thing is, if all of a sudden you decide you're gonna use it for all the overflow parking from the ramp, you're probably gonna have a lot of trouble with navigating that road, and the neighbors are gonna go ballistic, but that's either, either...
So what does this article do? Like, putting this on the warrant, what does it accomplish?
It's placeholder.
If the town boards and committees make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to purchase that property, and the Board of Selectmen agrees to move forward, this article will be on the town meeting warrant to allow you to appropriate funds for purchase.
And it has to be on the fall? Do you think it's spring?
You have a hundred and twenty days to make, to exercise your options.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. To see if the town will vote to approve four million dollars debt authorized by the vote of the Triton Regional School District to pay the cost of renovating the Triton Stadium, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, which amounts shall be reduced to the extent of grants, gifts, and other funds received by the district or any other of this, and expected in a total of eight hundred thousand dollars, or if they take any other actions relative thereto. Do I have a motion to recommend?
Motion to include.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
My understanding is that if we do not either put this on the warrant or move no action on it, that it goes through, is that correct?
If you choose to not include it on the warrant, it's deemed an automatic approval.
Now, we've discussed back and forth the pros and cons of having it on the warrant or not having it on the warrant. Why, why put it on the warrant?
You want me?
Well, there again, it's up to the people to make that decision, not us. And I wanna see it on the town floor and have them say, yes, then we know what direction to go in.
I mean...
Now, would this include, if we pass it at town meeting, do we then have to hold within a hundred and fifty days the, the balloting?
No, because we'd be utilizing, um, our annual budgeting capacity, our levy capacity, to pay the additional costs. It doesn't require an override on our private debt exclusion.
Now, why, when we first looked at the stadium, did it go into the ballot as a debt override question?
I think the initial numbers that we were looking at before, there was the application of the rental fees against it. I, I, they're keeping forty thousand, is that right? They're keeping the initial forty thousand in, in rental fees to, for future maintenance, but all of the rest will be applied against, um, the debt service payments that are distributed to each of the towns. I think the worst-case scenario that we looked at the other night was approximately seventy-two thousand dollars for Newbury, but in all likelihood, it will be less than that. And with the, um, reduction that we've seen in our assessment, we can certainly make that up in our, within our regular operating budget.
So, go ahead.
So, if, if we place it on the warrant, and it goes before town meeting, like, what are the pros and cons of that?
The pros of the vote of the town, that it could get voted down, potentially.
What happens if it, if it gets voted down?
Does it happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
But you can't speak to that?
Dead in the water.
Is that in the water? It kills the whole branch.
Yeah, all three towns have to approve this. So, the safest way, as far as the district is concerned, is if you did not put it on the warrant, because then, like you said, Damon, it's an automatic yes vote. Rowley has already had their vote and approved it. Salisbury, I believe, is putting it on there, and it's up to you whether you put this on the warrant or not.
Yeah.
Now, in our meeting that we had Thursday night, when we looked at the funding mechanism for this, there was a lot of compromise for both the towns and, and the district as far as the funding mechanism. And I think that we had a good representation from all three towns, both their finance and board of selectmen. And in large part to Brian and Neil Harrington from Salisbury, they came up with a, a proposal initially, that was tweaked the other night, that I think is fair to, to all three communities and, and to the district. And it's something that, as a school committee member, I strongly feel that we need.
Because the stadium is condemned, as of right, right now.
It is, the, the
We're really looking at the same situation that, that the police department should be condemned. And the stadium is condemned, and
The bleachers have been removed, so right now we cannot have
There's no graduations out there or anything like that?
We can't do anything.
See, the only problem is, and I'm in full agreement, as I always have, moving forward in the stadium, Rowley voted for an override. Salisbury is gonna put it on their warrant, and it might fail. So, we have discussion of the fact that once again, our selectmen are gonna make a decision that could be under the table, up in the storm, and not include the people of town meeting.
But it's not, it's not going to be, it's really not any additional cost to the people of the town meeting.
It's just the fact that I'd love to, for me anyway, it's just the fact that I'm having a little trouble following into the placeholder of not wanting to include the electorate because we don't trust them anymore?
No, I don't think it's that question at all.
I, I think you're going to get an overwhelming support at town meeting for this. I, I think it's a slam dunk. And, and the argument is, all we're doing is giving the district back some of the money that they refunded to us last year. I think we saved a quarter million dollars last year up of our budget. And now we're reinvesting some of that back into education and sports.
And you gotta remember, we're only doing what Salisbury's doing. They could reject it. They could.
It'd be a fatal mistake not to put this on the warrant.
I, I couldn't agree more with you, I agree with Jeff, we would be severely remiss if we did not include the public law.
I agree with all of that. All I am asking is that when this does come up, if there are questions, that the public understands that our board of selectmen is in favor of this as well.
Well, it's not, it's not only that too, Deanna, I mean, I would hate like hell if this was the town that killed the new stadium. But I also think that this town is in a crossroads, as you heard, who sat through today.
Oh, I have.
That we still need to take in, you know, move in concert with the voters. And I'm only one person, I've always checked out the same way. There's still, I think, we have to think about it. So, we have a motion, there could be more discussion, more discussion?
Just, I know, I was just gonna say, didn't you, did you just say that there was no additional cost to the town? No, you didn't say, no, there's no additional cost. Right, so if you put that forth at town meeting and say that to people, I don't think anybody will have a problem.
And, and I agree with Bob that there probably will be support there, but I think it is important that town meeting hears that this board, FinCon, school committee, everybody is working towards this goal. I think when it's separate, or that there, the, the public sense that there's some division, that's when we get in problems.
Listen, it'll be, our recommendation, we're gonna take a vote again right now. The finance committee, you've already voted. You haven't voted, but you will.
Well, we, we, we all voted on this concept last year, except the vehicle, the fund, it was an override. Now we're just, well, now it's coming out of our operating budget.
So, but, I mean, even before we recommend, um, to take a vote, to put this on the warrant, I'd like to make a quick motion that we recommend that we're all behind the stadium project for four million dollars.
Sure.
All right, just to reaffirm it, it's on TV. Someone make a motion, quick.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to affirm the building of the new stadium at Triton.
Which they actually did before, like Bob said, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. So let it reflect, under the motion, the board of selectmen unanimously approves. We'll do also with the other boards and committees, we'll do also.
Okay, one more time.
I, I think what you just said was really, one of you said a very succinct sentence about how the money was, and this is a new issue for me, and it made a lot of sense to me here, those two sentences. So, I, I wanted you to just repeat them.
So will the finance committee speak to this?
All right, so we have a, um, motion to recommend, is there any more discussion among my board?
My only concern with this, and the reason I brought it up, was I didn't want to muddy the waters in the town meeting, but I feel that we can explain it adequately, and so I'm, I hope that we all vote for it now.
Yeah, and my concern with this too is muddy, not so much muddy the waters for the school, because it's a no-brainer to me, but it's, I wasn't afraid it's gonna muddy the waters for the municipal building.
Yes.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article sixteen, to see if the town votes to accept as public way under the provision of Mass General Laws, amended the roadway, and this is just bringing Livingston Lane, which we all talked about, to town meeting, to be accepted as a town road. Can I have a motion?
Motion to recommend, second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article seventeen was explained perfectly by Tracy. I would just like to amend that if I can, it might not I would just like to amend that if I can, and it might not be the right words, but I'd like to strike the CLAM commissioners off that because they want to come personally. I've been working with them with DMF to open some contaminated flats and it looks like we've been... So it looks like that they would like to come to speak to the board because they have a new way of working that doesn't have recommendations of votes or anything else through the chair, which is Peter Patino and the CLAM commissioner. So they'd like to come and discuss it with us and see if it passes muster with town council and everything. And if it doesn't, then it'll go on the spring. So Article 17.
Why don't we just hold the whole article till the spring?
That's good. All right. We'll hold the whole article till this.
So I just have a question about this. Is this a change to our, because it says an act establishing itself. Are we changing that or is that just...
That would be changing. This is already there. This would be just making some changes to our...
Just the three, the three things you talked about.
I don't think a three-word name is one. Can we make that any?
It was removed from Section 14.
Okay. So we are eliminating Article 17 from the law.
Into the spring.
Okay. And that's it. Motion to close. Motion to adjourn.
Two seconds.
Any discussion?
You all need to stop by the office on Monday to sign.
All those in favor, right?
You all deserve a round of applause.
Thank you, everybody.